And I see we've got people coming in now, so. But yeah, at 3:58, we'll, we'll hit the live button for the television and Facebook and so by, by four o'clock or 4:01, we'll be, they'll be behind a minute, but they'll, they'll catch, they'll catch the entirety of the broadcast. And I'll give you all a confirmation that it's live on TV 14 in the next two to three minutes.
Thanks, Pat.
It looks like the board meeting is live on Facebook at this time.
Great. We will start in a few minutes. Is one, one here? Okay.
They'll, they'll catch, they'll catch the entirety of the broadcast.
I just want to let you know, a couple of board members, because the time change cannot stay indefinitely. So hopefully, or for the day change, so hopefully we can get this, you know, get out as soon as possible. Thank you, Jessica. We got your chat. One minute. Okay, I have four o'clock on my Chromebook here, so I am comfortable calling the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us today. We're going to have a moment of silence as, just to move into the agenda. So we're going to do that right now. Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then we'll do the roll call of board members. Ms. Green.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
President.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Here.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And Ms., our student rep, Ms. Madeline Packer.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Packer. Thank you for joining us today. Please do not hesitate to comment, or especially when I'm like, hey, does anybody have any questions or comments? Please don't hesitate to, to pop in for a comment. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the proposed agenda. Anybody have any questions?
We approve the agenda for this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One second.
Okay. Now we'll take the vote on that.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item on our agenda is the comments from members of the public. The City of Charlottesville School Board welcomes members, welcomes comments from members of the public. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address at the start of your comment. Before we go into public comment, I would like to note for the record that today is December 17th, and this is a work session of the Charlottesville City School Board, because I always forget to say that at the top of the hour. So I apologize for that. Mr. Cuomo, who do we have? Or what can we do?
Sure. At this time, I'd last, I'll just remind those of you who wish to participate in this public comment section to either raise your hand using the raise hand feature. That will let me know you'd like to, let us know you'd like to speak, or to please type a comment in the chat box so that we can acknowledge you.
So please raise your hand if you would like to make a comment at this time, or indicate in the chat that you would like to make a comment. We'll give you a minute or two to, well, by a minute, I mean like 25 seconds-ish. And see if we can get some, because I understand we had several people registered for public comment. So I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to make those comments now. Of course, we do have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting, but I can't predict when that will be.
And we do have, we do have, looks like the name is Angel Fiero. Angel can unmute at this time.
Hi, Ms. Fiero. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Angel Fiero, 825 Prospect Avenue. Dear Madam Chair Board, Dr. Atkins, thank you again for having me. Thank you for the countless hours you've spent looking at data, reading letters, and hearing comments from the public. You have an extremely difficult job. I just want to take a moment to give light to some of the challenging situations occurring as a result of virtual education. Imagine having five children who need help with virtual education, but you and your partner both have jobs that require you to work in person. Imagine having to use a hotspot from your car to help your child access school. Imagine a child trying to focus on virtual learning at a babysitter's house in the midst of several young, loud children in the background. Imagine being a single parent and having to quit your job just so you can adequately support your children with virtual school. Lastly, imagine being told repeatedly that it is not safe to send your children to school right now, yet having to send your child to a learning center because you're unable to work remotely. The point is, many of our most vulnerable families are taking risks each day at work, entrusting others to care for their children during what would be normal school hours. We cannot pretend that virtual education is a safe option for everyone. If it were, we would not need community partners for it to be accessible to all families. I beg you to look outside of your own experiences as you weigh the pros and cons of voting for in-person instruction in January. I know numbers have risen. I know things change all the time, which is why it's so important to have safety measures and protocols in place. There have been no outbreaks in Charlottesville due to learning centers, private schools, and daycares being open. So I ask you to consider the many studies that continue to show that schools operating in person do not heavily influence community spread. I believe Dr. Atkins and her team understand the need to offer more than just a virtual choice, because they understand the complex needs of all learners and families. They've done the hard work, answered the many questions of teachers, parents, and the school board, and have planned for such a time as this. In January, with the holidays behind us, please allow CCS the opportunity to show they can implement these plans safely and give families a choice so that we can in confidence say that CCS is offering equitable education. If it cannot be offered to all CCS students safely, please allow our youngest grades back in the buildings. I know that each of you cares deeply for families, teachers, and the entire CCS community, and that you will do your best to consider all that is before us as you make your decision. So thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fiero. Who is next? Mr. Cuomo?
I am not seeing any, oh, I do have hand raised. I have, Chris Meyer has, has a hand raised and is able to unmute at this time.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, you have three minutes when you're unmuted.
Yeah. Good afternoon, school board members. On behalf of the Charlottesville City Schools Joint PTO Reopening Fund, we'd like to provide you and the community with a short update on its progress to date. This is a reminder also that the Joint PTO Reopening Fund was created to support effective teaching in a virtual environment and allows equal opportunity for each student and teacher to productively utilize the district's mandatory, now more nine-week virtual learning plan. The reopening fund has received a total of $161,098 from 185 donors. 159,000 of this has been distributed to the CCS schools, which have created dedicated committees to select expenditures. These committees have been spending the resources to support students' virtual learning needs, and in some cases, meeting families' needs. Some examples of how the funding has been spent include purchases of desks, styluses, Chromebook chargers, and headphones in various combinations at most schools to assist children in virtual learning from home. Purchases of notebooks, dry erase boards and markers, math manipulatives such as dice, art supplies, and other school supplies. Payments to virtual learning locations, and finally, payments to meet the essential needs of families such as rent, bills, and grocery cards. The school committees are now shifting to planning for news generated from the potential reopening, which you, of course, are discussing tonight. From the beginning, this committee has been committed to transparency of this effort. We encourage anyone to visit ccsptofund.org. ccsptofund.org again, to find how funds are being spent and distributed. We wish you a constructive meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, appreciate your comments and all the work you've done on behalf of the Joint PTO fundraising effort. Who's next? Mr. Cuomo?
Ahmed, again, at this time, I am not seeing any other hands raised, so if you want to give up time for final comment for this first part, I will wait to hear for that time.
Okay, great. So if you have a public comment and would like an opportunity to speak at this time, please raise your hand or indicate in the chat. And I'm going to go ahead and give a few seconds for anybody to indicate now if they would like to chat. I'm sorry, make a public comment. Like I said, we have another public comment period later. So you will have another opportunity for speaking. Just want to also note that Ms. Bryson Morseburger is, in the case, there's some power issues, of course, throughout the city and in her neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that as we go in, you know, in continuing this meeting, that there might be some of that power issue. Okay, so we're going to close public comment and move on to action items, which is, the first one is actually, is the only item on the under-action item, which is return to face-to-face learning. And Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, what we'd like to do is present and Ms. Packer. What we'd like to do is present to you tonight several different areas for your consideration. At our last board meeting, we presented a hybrid model for our secondary level to return to school, and we also presented a four-day-a-week model for our pre-K through six students to return to school. There were a number of questions that the board had and, and areas that the board asked us to explore, some of which centered around the need to make sure that we maintain the quality of our virtual program and try to also maintain the, the amount of synchronous learning that was taking place in our virtual program as we transitioned to bringing more students back face-to-face. We've asked our teams at the school level and our COVID advisory committee to consider those comments and to make any additional recommendations that they would like to make to the superintendent. So tonight, what we'd like to do is present a K6 model for returning students to school other than all students coming back, all students who indicated they would like to return face-to-face, returning to the building. And then to present to you, Buford and Charlottesville High School, a model where we're maintaining the quality of the virtual program, the amount of time that we have in synchronous learning, and bringing select students back to our building. So I want to thank our team for working on those presentations. We have Dr. Beth Baptist that will start our presentation with an overview of where we are now with the metrics. Then you will hear from each of our committee members and principals in their presentation. And after that, you'll be presented a day in the life of a student at the K6 level, and then I will make recommendations to the board for moving forward. So let's start with Dr. Baptist.
Okay. Chairman McKeever, board members, Dr. Atkins. One of the first things I want to say about looking at our metrics is we know that looking at the metrics can be very confusing. We also know that there's been a lot of change in the last three weeks since Thanksgiving. We know that within the Thomas Jefferson Health District, our numbers have been better than many of the other places, but they're still rising, which you will see. We know that looking at just one metric isn't going to be a great decision. We know that looking at just multiple metrics over one day can't be. We've got to look at various ways, and there's no set principle for us to follow with this. Dr. Atkins can attest to the fact, I've tried to look at the different metrics in many different ways, looking just at Charlottesville, looking at our nearby school divisions that would be working with our students in athletics or other events to see how their numbers are going. And I've, this particular chart has been available to you, and we update it every day. But what we wanted to share with you a little bit, because of the Thanksgiving surge that we had heard so much talk about, to let you see what has changed in Charlottesville's numbers since then. And we're going back to December the 4th, which is a week after Thanksgiving, but that's about when we started seeing some of the cases and to begin some of the rise. So in these seven days, from December the 4th through the 10th, you can see the CDC incidence rate went up. The rolling new cases over 14 days went up. Our positivity rate went up some, and the percent change of seven days to the previous seven days went up pretty drastically for the number of cases. Then Ms. Packer, if you'll show us the next seven days. So here are the last seven days, including today. So we've gone from the low 200s up to 365.8 within our incident rate. We've gone from about 120 to 176 in our rolling 14 days. Our positivity rate has gone from just over 1% to 2.3%. We are seeing some of the percent changes from seven days to seven days to somewhat change, but we're still, I think, more concerned about our incident rate number continuing to go up. So we want to be mindful of that. Now, the positivity rate, we are looking just at Charlottesville, and this does not include the influence of UVA in there. I know you've been receiving some information from UVA professor. What he's looking at, and I have talked with him, and I have seen his calculation, he's looking at the overall Thomas Jefferson Health District, which is very important, rather than just looking at Charlottesville City. What we present here is just Charlottesville City without the influence of UVA. What the actual positivity rate would be if we had the UVA numbers in there, we're not sure. We would just have to somewhat guesstimate what they would be. I'm pretty sure, though, they're higher than what we are able to report here. So what we're giving you is the actual reporting number, just Charlottesville. Any question about that before we look at one more slide? Okay, next slide, Ms. Packer. So since we've been looking at the difference with the Thanksgiving slide, this shows where we were on Thanksgiving Day compared to where we are now. And so you can see the change in each of the metrics. On the, the two bright columns, that's the Virginia Department of Health metrics. It looks at seven days versus the 14 days that the CDC looks at. And so you can see where we've gone from 19.6 to 24.6, and then what the positivity was. Because all of these colors get very confusing, I've included what the color bands are. So you, what you can really see with our CDC rate for 14 days, we're above the 200, so we're in the red. We're in the highest risk there. Our positivity rate is in the lowest area. Again, I'm not sure that that is 100% without counting in the UVA, but I can't make an educated guess there. Our Virginia Department of Health incident rate is in the dark blue, and you can see that anything greater than 14.3 is considered the highest risk with Virginia Department of Health. And then when we look at the positivity over seven days, we have been in the lowest area, which is the light yellow. Today, we moved into the light green. So we moved from the lowest risk today to the next lowest risk. So we're seeing the positivity rate, you can see it both in CDC and in the Virginia Department of Health, to rise. So that's kind of where we are at this point. All of this information will be updated every day, even through the break, and you've got access to it. If you've got any questions about any of it, please do not hesitate to call. Again, it's confusing, so it's a lot of information to try to, to take in and understand, and I don't profess to, that I understand all of it, but I'm trying.
Dr. Baptist, can I just ask? Because we are talking always about different, like apples and oranges here, so I want to talk apples to apples. And that is what's confusing me here. If we were just to do, like, for example, at our November meeting, you presented us data. If, if we had the similar data today, is that what this? You know, like, what does that data look like? Is it the same? Are we comparing apples and apples, or is, have you changed what you're reporting to us?
We're comparing the same metrics. They're just going up. For instance, on November the 5th, which was our first November meeting, the CDC incidence rate on that particular day was 201.6. Today, it's 365.8.
Okay, so, and you, just with two things, one is, we, yeah, the, the health district data versus our local city data versus health district or our local city data with UVA students, that's, like, how are we reporting all of this?
We, we don't have reporting for Charlottesville City that includes the UVA positivity data. They are not breaking that out separately. So what we have is for our positivity rate, whether we're looking at the CDC 2.3 or the VDH 3.5, that is not including the UVA positivity rate just for Charlottesville, because when UVA does their testing, they're not breaking it out. This number of tests is Charlottesville, this number of tests is Albemarle, this number of tests like that. So that's where it does make it very complex to try to figure that, that piece out. But the metrics that I'm giving you are the same ones over time, just updated numbers.
Okay, so, my, I guess the issue, so, that's a very, just, maybe I just haven't thought about this before, or maybe the numbers weren't so, I don't know, big. But can, like, in November, you talked about the health, about, you know, the city of Charlottesville data. All of this is city of Charlottesville data.
Yes.
Not include UVA students, but the health district data does include UVA students.
This is Health Department data. The, the two columns on the health, the health district, it does include it in some way, but doesn't divide it out to let us know, again, how much Charlottesville get, how much Albemarle versus Louisiana versus Savannah, it's all total for them. They don't, they don't separate it out by locality, because like today, the Thomas Jefferson Health District positivity rate for the entire district was 5.4%, but they don't divide that out, how much of that is in the different localities within the Health District.
Okay, I see that every day on Facebook, though. Like, I see, like, how many numbers, like, like the increase today was for Albemarle this, and the increase today for Charlottesville is this. So it does get disaggregated somewhat. My point only is really Charlottesville, Albemarle. Albemarle has had this huge increase over the past two weeks, and Charlottesville has had an increase, but not as significant as Albemarle. And I just, it feels like people in Albemarle, I don't know, co-mingle with the people in Charlottesville. Maybe even teach in our schools. And so I'm just wondering how, what recommendations you might have for us to consider about, you know, the Charlottesville numbers versus like the whole Health District numbers.
Well, that's one reason why I have been in a different chart, have been comparing, or not comparing, but including the numbers for our, our various communities, because we do co-mingle, or we, you know, migrate back and forth. And that's why Dr. Lernow has been doing, I may have mispronounced his name. That's why he's doing it for the overall Health District, because he talks about the migration in between all of us. So yeah, I think we need to look at what is truly city of Charlottesville, but we also need to be cognizant of what is going on around us, because so many of our people are going in and out between the two. So if you want to look at the overall Health District positivity rate, today it was 5.1. Around Thanksgiving time, it was 1.9. So it's gone from 1.9 to 5.4 for the overall Health District. And that's after students have left, so that's not including all of the UVA students. And there still could be off-ground students that are being tested, and we still see student numbers every day on the UVA tracker. So they're getting student counts either here in Charlottesville or being reported from other places. But even without the students, the positivity rate for our Health District has gone up over four percentage points.
Does anybody else have any questions around this data on the board? I can't see you, so you got to speak up.
Okay, I have a question just for us as a board and to Dr. Baptiste and Dr. Atkins. When we were talking about our metrics for if we open, and then our metrics for what we'd have in place when we'd say it's time to go back to some modified version, we, 5% was our positivity, or our positivity percentage, or that's what we're, 5% is the, is the, is the mark that we're trying to stay below, correct?
It is, but again, I don't know that we have 100% assurance that our positivity rate of the 2.3 is only 2.3 without having some of those other numbers in there, but I can't tell you exactly what that number should be, because I don't know. And I have asked the Health Department if they can help us come up with a more definitive positivity rate, but they are not disaggregating it in the way that we can use it just to look at Charlottesville.
And I'm sorry, because it was a little confusing. So are you saying that you think with those numbers, our percentages will be higher or lower?
I think our percentages would be higher if we had all of those, the UVA numbers in there, because one thing with all of the testing that's going on, you have a lot larger denominator when you're figuring out that fraction or percentage. So if we had fewer, then I think our, I, I think our positivity rate would show up higher. I just am not sure how much higher, and I don't want to tell you it's X amount. I've played around with it and sort of came up with a number, but it was more my playing around with it. It was not a scientific research to do that.
Um, Dr. Baptist, go ahead, Juan. I'm sorry.
No, I said, so, um, I'm sure that some of this is contributed to the, kind of, the surge after Thanksgiving, and I guess we're anticipating it again next week, a couple of weeks after Christmas. And so have you talked with the Health Department, or, I mean, have we kind of, is it thought that maybe we, as American people, have kind of learned a lesson that we see this big surge now across the whole country, that maybe we'll kind of lay back a little bit during a holiday, you know, during the next holidays? Or I'm trying to anticipate that, you know, next month, when we're planning to start easing the students, at least the discussion. I'm trying to anticipate that, you know, next month when we're planning to start easing the students, at least the discussion, would these numbers look better or worse it when we come back in, let's say, three weeks?
Mr. Wade, I would love to say that I think they're going to look better. But this all happened after roughly a three to four day weekend for Thanksgiving. And now we're getting ready to have a two-week break with two major holidays during that time, Christmas and New Year's. Um, we know that much of the community spread, not just in Charlottesville, but all around, is from smaller social groups getting together. It's not the major super-spreaders as much as it is smaller groups. And I don't think there is any indication that they think it's going to be less after Christmas and New Year's. I meet with the health department every week, and we're all anticipating, um, at least what we've had from Thanksgiving surge, if not higher. Because people will have more time to travel and more time to get together in small groups.
And Wade, the concern that he, we have now is the trend is continuing to, um, go into an incline. Uh, it's continuing to go up. And we're third, three weeks out from the Thanksgiving break now. And we still have not seen that we've reached a peak and starting to either level off or trend down. So we're pretty concerned about those trend numbers still continuing to climb.
And, you know, we've heard a lot of comments that, that, you know, this uptick is not necessarily contributed to any type of, um, you know, um, K through twelve type of education setting is mainly, you know, just kind of small get-togethers type of thing, um. Anything from the health department, and maybe later in your dis- discussion about, you know, schools, um, meeting, uh, and I know we've received a presentation from them before about that, but I just want to know, has anything changed?
Nothing really has changed, because since, um, many of our school districts are not back in session, we're not getting as much information from there. Uh, we do have, uh, pediatric, pediatricians who meet with the health department group every week. And one of the pediatric groups this week talked about the increase in cases of infants, middle school age and teenagers, that they couldn't tie back to any specific event. So they were seeing more unusual community uh, spread than they had before, which was concerning. Um, but we're, we've not had any outbreaks in any of the schools in, uh, the Thomas Jefferson Health District at this point. And a outbreak is defined as two associated cases at any one school. So there've been cases at schools, not in Charlottesville, but in surrounding jurisdictions, but they have not been tied back or determined to be related cases.
And in the same breath, they're having a hard time, and they're overwhelmed with contact tracer, contact tracing at this point, too.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so despite a very significant increase in cases, does the health department has not changed any of their recommendations around going back to school?
No.
Okay.
Um, what, what does that mean, um, that they haven't changed any of their recommendations? What, what are they recommending?
Well, they're recommending to, to follow and to, to use some of the metrics that we're sharing to look at, and also to see what mitigation is in place. And if, uh, the health department is saying, if we're pretty sure we've got all of the staff that we need and mitigation in place, that it might be a consideration for opening, but we need to also look at the numbers. There is no set document that says if this, 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 this happens, open school.
And the State Department of Education is working with a VDH now to bring more clarity to how, how to use the metrics that we have to help inform decisions for school boards and school divisions. Uh, and there is no clarity right now around how to use these metrics.
I looked at about twelve different school divisions to see what they were using for their decisions. And several of them just linked to the health department website to look at their numbers. They didn't really have any one metric or series of metrics or what, it just, it wasn't there. People are still grappling for what to do.
Well, it, it strikes me that we, we need to really look at the district data because our staff, probably a large majority of our staff do not live within the city limits of Charlottesville. So they're coming in from, um, various parts of our, of our district, our region. And, um, you know, if there are outbreaks and, and they have exposure, you know, then that would be a concern that they would be bringing that exposure into the building. I think, um, when we look at just the, the Charlottesville data, it's, I, I guess, if I'm trying to understand this, um, but we're looking at, um, possible, uh, exposure from starting with children entering the building. These families who do live in the city and who could then, um, expose some of our staff, our teachers and other staff to this. But as far as, you know, looking at the entire system, we have lots of people coming into, or we'll, we'll be coming in to our buildings from around our, our district, our health district. And so it seems to me that we really have to look, look at that, um, perhaps over the, just the Charlottesville data. So that's sort of a statement, but it's a question. Um, and my other question here is about testing. And is there any sense that we might have increased, um, options for testing uh, around the time that we are, um, wanting to open up? So that we know that that's available, um, for our staff and, and if needed for, for students. Where are we with, with testing?
They are testing, um, and they did a testing at Charlottesville High School, not just for high school, but for community last Friday. And there is a, um, schedule for various testing that is upcoming, but it's not just for Charlottesville City. It, students or staff, it would be community.
Is there anything that we could put in place, um, testing-wise? So that, you know, we, we know that, you know, on January eighth or something like that, that, that people could get tested. You know, who, you know, who would like to get tested?
I have been working with, um, a physician at UVA and also with someone, um, uh, that's at UVA but not physician. They don't have the manpower to do, or the testing, to do a massive testing just for Charlottesville City schools. And I, because I have asked if we could do that the first week that, that we're back, and that is not possible. Leslie, can I share one thing on my screen, please?
You see the option yet, Beth?
It says it's been, um, disabled.
Hold on one sec.
Uh, there is a testing event tomorrow at CHS, is my understanding.
Um, hey, Brad, could you give that, um, Beth permission to share?
Try now, Beth.
I did, thank you. Dr. Craft, and, and answer to your question, this is what looks like with different, um, communities within our area. Um, and what I did is I started it in January, so that Monday, that Thursday, that Monday, that Thursday and today, so that you can see all of the communities in our area are well over the two hundred mark. And we've got, uh, we, Charlottesville City does have the lowest positivity rate, although it is now above the three percent that they would want it to be, to be in the lowest, um, risk area. And then we've got some fairly significant positivity rates across. And this is all using CDC measures from the fourteen-day group. So we are looking at it across the area by individual communities.
It's very helpful, Beth, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as testing, community testing goes, um, I understand that there's not the capacity to do it just for the schools or just the city. But there are lots of opportunities. I wonder if, and not to add this to somebody else's plate, but if, if the schools, if we on our, our webpage could do, um, could blast that out and list that, or, you know, just include that somehow, um, just so that, that our families are getting that. I mean, I see it, I'm, I'm tapped into it. I get emails about it. Um, but I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't know when those, when and where those, those testings are happening. Would that be helpful? I don't know what people think.
It would be. We send it out, uh, Beth Chuck has been sending it out in our, um, staff communications. Um, but putting it on our website is another way that we can get it out to our public. So, um, and in our parent communications, we've been sending it out, but on our website is quite visible and everyone can see it there.
Right. I mean, I know UVA does, um, they have been doing consistently, I think, every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday at different locations. And then VDH does some as well, you know, around the health district. So there's two different opportunities and, and, you know, different, um, you know, two or three sites right here in the city. I think that, that that does happen through UVA. Um, and then the health district then does spread it out.
They're also trying to schedule at various schools around the city and the county. Again, like they had, uh, one last Friday at Charlottesville High School, and I think I heard someone say they're having another one. But they want to try to, um, have those at-school sites that people would attend.
Beth, thank you for your presentation. Um, now we'll have Christine Esposito to present the Elementary School Advisory Committee updated recommendations in light of, uh, the request for, to, um, maintain the quality of that virtual learning and the synchronous time, also in light of the trend data, the trend metrics that we've been seeing since Thanksgiving. Christine, thanks for being here with us.
Well, thanks for having me. Um, so I would like to go to the, um, our original recommendations, which were that we would do a phased return the week of January eleventh for the grades pre-K through first grade and fifth grade. Um, and the reminder was that January eleventh was decided in order to account for some of that travel that would have occurred over Christmas break. But I think, um, in light of what's been going on over Thanksgiving, maybe a week was not long enough. Um, but, uh, and then so the second cohort would have start, would start on January nineteenth, again with the phased return with half kid, half of the students returning on the first two days. And I think the second one, the second group returning on the second two days. Um, and a, a big part of that recommendation was on the metrics involved and that looking at the CDC's um, recommendations for it being less than two hundred cases per hundred thousand. But also including things like testing and local hospital beds and contact tracing capability. All of those things sort of being taken together. Um, one of the members of the committee talked about the burden on local health, the local health infrastructure, looking at it as a totality when we talk about opening schools. Um, and another important part of our recommendation, we believe, was that this was a most size fits, this was a one-size-fits-most model. And that some students, whether they be, um, in a functional skills program, other student, other special ed students or English language learners may, may need and should need to be considered separately, especially if they needed an accelerated timeline, as those are our most vulnerable students. And we believe they should, that giving them priority access would be an important piece. Um, could you do the next slide, please, Leslie? Um, and so additional, we, I touched base with the committee, uh, last week or the week before in light of the obviously rising trend numbers, um, to discuss, uh, if we wanted to add anything else to our recommendations. Um, I don't know that we did exactly, because we believe that our original recommendi- recommendation was very contingent on metrics. Um, so these are our additional recommendations, if the metrics do not indicate an early January return. Um, we believe that the week of January fourth should remain largely asynchronous for students, which would mean morning students and asynchronous assignments in order to give teachers time to turn their classrooms over into in-person learning spaces, even if we are not returning on the eleventh. Um, part of the thinking behind that is that if there's, if our spaces are ready, we can open much more quickly than if we need more time. The other piece is it is, if, if we were going to open on January eleventh, if we do open on January eleventh, most teachers in this division, despite the fact that it is winter break, will be working over winter break to do the curriculum and get the curriculum and their lesson plans done for that time period. If we do not do that on the week of January fourth, we'll be asking teachers to, to both change the curricular focus and the, and their physical spaces all within one week. And that, that is a, a tall, a tall order. The other piece being that while I'm sure the division has these plans, like working out the equity piece between the in-person instruction and the virtual instruction. Um, teacher should, uh, and then parents should be notified of changes so that, again, things, the changes that have sorry, wait, let me start over. Parents should be notified of whatever, uh, teacher changes will be happening so that they have time to get their students ready. And so that, again, this is not dropped on students at the last minute with an immediate turnaround. And also giving classes that will be split apart, a chance to sort of close where they are and kind of new classes to get started on, on, on a good footing. Um, we believe the school board, if we do not meet, should meet every two weeks, sorry about that, um, in order to determine whether or not the metrics for in-person opening have been met. We believe that the best thing is to open schools for as many students as possible. But we also want to do so safely, and we want to be able to do it as soon as the metrics say that it is safe. Um, and, and we believe the phased return should be implemented whenever the return to in-person is implemented. And those were our additional recommendations.
Thank you, Christine. We appreciate that. What we'd like to do now is to, uh, have our elementary school principals in light of the recommendations that the COVID Advisory Committee has made and, uh, looking at trend data since Thanksgiving. We have asked, um, our principals, Erin Kirchner and Summer Thompson, to present a model in addition to the original model, to present a, a new model for return to learn um, in light of these recommendations and the current trends. So Erin and Summer.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, Chairwoman McKeever, members of the school board and community. Uh, we have two options, um, to bring before you today, as Dr. Atkins said, in light of some of these changing, um, circumstances. Option A for pre-K through sixth grade, um, would have an in-person cohort and a virtual cohort. The in-person cohort would be all pre-K through second grade students who, whose families have already elected for them to come back. Uh, we chose pre-K to second grade because those are truly the critical years for building foundational skills and literacy, uh, for developing school readiness, for all the social, um, aspects of, of schooling. Not that they're not important at the other grades, but we are really building, uh, the building blocks at those early years. Grades three through six would be primarily virtual, um, with the exception of bringing back in-person students who receive tier-three services, English language learners who are at levels one to two in WEDA, um, and select students with IEPs um, based on IEP team meeting decisions. Um, this model would prioritize in-person learning for students with the most critical academic needs. We estimate that in grades three through four, in aggregate across all six elementary schools, we'd have about fifty-five to eighty-five students in person, um, and that same range for grades five and six. And then option B is the option that you are most familiar with, um, from previous meetings, uh, where our in-person cohort would be all pre-K to six students whose families elected, uh, for them to come back in person, that we would develop a master schedule and program that accommodate all those family intent form requests.
If we look at the option A that, um, Erin just presented, that option would allow our school divisions and our, our schools to have, um, more space in their buildings in light of the, um, metrics that, the incident metrics that we're looking at now. It would give them more flexibility in their buildings while still responding to the needs of our, our students who are most needy, uh, in our school division. Bringing back all of our pre-K two students would allow our teachers to work with them. and to help catch up some of the lost time that our students experienced during March through June. We'd also want to get those students back in the building because of the foundational literacy skills that they, they absolutely need in order to be successful in subsequent years. And that would be four days a week that we would bring in these cohorts of students. We're happy to answer any questions as we go along.
Yeah. Dr. Atkins, I just want to clarify, this, this option A is we're, we would put that in place if our metrics do not allow us to continue with our previous phased learning plan. This is an alternative with, with metrics that are, that are not deemed to be as good, good enough to continue with that plan. We would then do this plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. And at the end of all of the presentations, I'll make a recommendation to the board along those lines, Dr. Gray.
Any other questions for Ms. John?
Dr. Atkins, this is, Dr. Atkins, I have a question. Based on what Ms. Esposito said, we would be looking at option A to begin on the 18th of January or the 11th of January. She did not give a tentative date. And I, 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 I just need a tentative date.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. We would be recommending, in light of the current metrics, that we move the start date from January 11th to January 19th. The 18th is, is King Holiday, so we will not be in school on that day. But we could start transitioning students back in as early as the 19th. If, when the board meets on January 7th, the metrics indicate that we can safely return these cohorts of students to the building.
Okay.
And we would, those metrics would trend down closer to 200.
I thought that's what she meant, but I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now for option A, option B, and/or what?
I have one quick question, and I know you're going to do the day in the life of at some point. But is there, can you just tell us for the elementary kids, what's the frame like of the day that they would be at school? Like, how many hours? Is it a full day or is it a condensed schedule?
It would be a full day. It would be the same hours that we were proposing for the original option B. Yes.
Okay, so I, can you repeat again what you said about why it is, like this is, like option A would, is like safer? Like, I don't want to say safer, because I don't really know, like, but because, you know, just bringing pre-K through two back, how is that safer in the building?
It decreases, Ms. McKeever, the number of students and the number of staff members that we would have in the building. Currently, with the original option, principals were actually using every space, every classroom space in the building. And we would have 10 to 12 students in each of those spaces. This will allow us bringing back the pre-K through two students. It would allow us to spread classes out more, to have more flexibility in the building so that we will not have students as, in close contact, students and staff as close to one another as we would have to do should we bring in the original number of students, the entire pre-K through four grade students or pre-K through six students.
So this just feels like a pretty, I mean, I think this is very similar to what the secondary committee has kind of proposed around the high school. So I, I, I am familiar with this. So I, I think there's probably, do you guys have a day in the life for option A or?
We do.
Okay, great.
We do.
Okay.
After we finish presenting all of the models, we will give you a day in the life of a pre-K through sixth grade student or a K through sixth grade student to give you a sense of that movement in the building and some of the challenges that we will have once we bring the students back in the building. This A option allows us to target our instruction. It allows, we've heard a number of times from our community that they want us to bring our students back in the building, but they want us to do it safely and with the understanding that we cannot, with social distancing, we cannot accommodate all of the students back in the building. This allows us to plan for bringing in those targeted groups that we know they will perform better and work better if they have the face-to-face instruction. And I don't know if Summer or Erin would like to add anything additional. Erin?
I think in addition, in terms of spaces, just impact on some of our shared, shared spaces that we can't avoid, like common bathrooms. If I have third and fourth grade predominantly virtual, that frees up six classrooms that would not be also using shared bathroom spaces. So, and it frees up more playground room and more opportunities for students to spread out on the playground and more frequently use the playground. So, so while building impact is not our number one priority, safety is our number one priority. Having fewer people in the building allows us to more safely do some of the things that are just a regular part of an elementary school day and have a little more normalcy.
Yes, I, I agree completely with Dr. Kirchner. I think it gives us, it does give us a little bit more flexibility with regards to space, space usage, and then it does affect our staff allocations to some extent, again, giving us a little bit more breathing room.
And we would continue with our virtual program for our families who have opted for virtual. And the amount of synchronous time would remain. We would not be decreasing synchronous time.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts or questions on this?
Ms. McKeever, it's Lisa here. Dr. Atkins, I, I may have some questions. I guess I just want to, I, I like this. I want to make sure, and would love to hear, but I'm, I'm willing to wait a little bit just to make sure that, that staffing, you know, that there isn't an extra burden and that the staffing will fall into place okay as far as those, those people that are in the building and the teachers that then are responsible for the, the virtual instruction. I don't know if, if you all have had enough time to kind of look at that. Definitely am supportive of getting these groups in the building and whether or not, and again, I don't need answers to this right now and we can maybe bring it all in together later as comments. But if this is a way to kind of phase kids into, you know, smaller groups and then ultimately getting to option B, which is what, you know, the primary option B, a few weeks later or something like that.
I, I love the comment about making sure that whichever model we implement, that the burden on teachers is one in which is manageable. It is extremely difficult to put a teacher in a position in which the teacher has to teach face-to-face and also teach virtually. Those are difficult positions to put our staff and our teachers in. The option A would allow us to have teachers either teaching face-to-face or virtually. So Erin or Summer, you want to talk about, a little bit about that, how this model would allow that to happen?
This, this my, option A, like Summer mentioned, potentially allows us a little more flexibility in, in terms of staffing than option B. Because when we are having a model where some people are in the building and some people are online, with every cohort, we actually need more staff as classroom teachers than we currently have. So if we have two grade levels who remain virtual, we only need to use those teachers who are currently classroom teachers to serve those students in the virtual setting. We do not need to add additional personnel to create new in-person classrooms. So we would be able to accommodate option A with current staffing and have teachers only teaching virtual or only teaching in-person.
I agree with that. I think the one possible exception might be some of our specials or specialists, just in terms of some of them may need to teach virtually and in-person, but not at the same time. But yes, this is, this is an accomplishable staff allocation situation. I'm anticipating taking what I've already planned for pre-K through two and carrying that through. And then the change will be how three and four are allocated just because we would have potentially a few children coming in and that, in those groups.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions on this? Do you all think that families would respond differently to survey if they were given a choice, like, you know, because I, I obviously have a first grader and a fourth grader? And I just wonder, like, maybe families would do something different if they were, thought their fourth grader would be virtual and their first grader would be, could go in person. Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
You know, there, there may be families would have to reconsider the option that they selected. We would work on working with each of those individual families to try to accommodate those needs. The principals have gone through quite a bit right now to develop schedules, master schedules. So we would let each building handle our families and those options on an individual basis. We would, we would offer to our families if they felt like they needed to make that switch, that they would contact their principal and have a conversation and the, with the principal, they can work that out.
Okay. So, one of the things that I meant, that the PTO, I'm sorry, not the PTO letter, the, the Elementary COVID Return to Learn Committee email that they sent to the school board indicated that they acknowledged that there would be some issue with the virtual learning spaces if we did the asynchronous learning, asynchronous week the right after Christmas, after the holiday, and then did not go immediately back to school the next week. So the, that original plan had the January 4th, I'm sorry, January 11th, it's all blurry, the January 4th week being asynchronous and then January 11th going back to school. And so what they're recommending continuing is to have the asynchronous week be January 4th. But I wonder if we are waiting for more ti- like, before we go back to school, can we give, you know, in-person, can we give more space to the virtual learning centers by, by not having that asynchronous week that until the week before we go back to school, whenever that is?
And, and I've heard that question also. Ms. Esposito, do you want to, to talk a little bit about the rationale for continuing to request January 4th as the asynchronous week?
I think it came down to asking teachers to do a lot in a single week. And that was move all their physical spaces and then also pivot their instruction from online to in-person. But we absolutely acknowledge that that did put burdens elsewhere. And so kind of punted that to you guys to make that, that choice as to which, which gets the most. But it really was an effort to try and reduce the strain on teachers because while they are not paid to work over break, if we were going back right after break, they would take, most teachers would take that time over break to do the work. And so that first week back would only prop, for most teachers, be physically moving their classrooms. Whereas if we are, if we then ask them to do that, they're going to be doing a lot that, that, in that in-between week.
And Ms. McKeever, I think we might need to give some thought to, is it necessary for us to have a division-wide week for asynchronous learning for, in order to let the teachers set up their classroom? There are teachers, there are pros and cons on both sides. Pros and cons to having January 4th week as that asynchronous setup week and there are pros and cons there, and there are pros and cons to delay it until a week before we actually return face-to-face. And I think it's, some of it will depend on individual teachers and what they need. So perhaps we need to give some thought to whether we need to allow our building principals to work with their staff to determine when it occurs at the time that it works best in their school for that to happen.
Well, I love that answer. I think that's a hundred percent the right answer. And, you know, I, you know, that, you guys are the professionals. And I think, you know, staff working with their principals is the best-case scenario. The only place I really have a lot of concerns are the places where our virtual learning centers are. And I'm sure Dr. Hastings and the YMCA team can work together and whomever else is housing a work, a virtual learning center can also work with the individual principals and staff to kind of come up with a best-case scenario or, you know, work with the teachers.
Yeah, Jennifer, I, I agree. I, I think that the principals, they should be able to work with their staff. I, I definitely don't want to do another survey. I can imagine that the teachers and maybe in the public as well are probably surveyed out. I think we have the pulse on what their feelings are on the reopening, be it emails and the comments and things that we get, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Any other comments about the option A, option B slash Elementary COVID Committee?
Yeah, Ms. McKeever, quickly, I just want to, I'm sure a lot of people are kind of scratching their heads going, where did this come from? And, and this is the first time some people are kind of seeing this and thinking about this. And I just want to thank whoever kind of took a look at this as an option. You know, considering what's going on with the numbers, considering we, as a board, have received a lot of emails, you know, encouraging and asking for if and when the return to face-to-face, you know, to consider and, and if we needed to prioritize those students who, who, you know, need the targeted interventions and the supports in the building. So I, I appreciate this as an option for us to consider. So thank you.
Do you want to continue on with your presentation, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you so much. Now, we, we have Ms. Sita DeLary, who will present the Buford Middle School Option A model, very similar to the elementary school. Sita, thank you for being here with us.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Atkins, thank you for having us tonight. We'd like to share with you our proposal for a return to face-to-face learning. Our proposed schedule centers around maintaining the instructional time our students have grown accustomed to this year, while retaining consistency with student schedules and providing more support for our most vulnerable population of learners. The schedule is based upon feedback from stakeholders via town hall discussions, surveys and intent forms. Students in our target groups will attend in-person two to four days a week. In-person target groups will maintain their virtual instructional schedule with their assigned teachers, but will receive access support and supervision from our engagement support specialists and/or our instructional assistants within the building. Classroom teachers will also provide additional face-to-face instructional support for students attending in-person. If we could go on to the next slide, please. So what does that look like? Okay, well, we're working on a matrix to determine how many days per week students will be able to attend in-person. Considerations are ESOL, students with disabilities, the engagement level historically this year, and students in tier and two, I'm sorry, tier two and three, based on the CTSS model. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Students will be located in three separate locations in the building while following CDC safety guidelines. Asynchronous time will be within each instructional block, either at the beginning or the end of the block. This time allows staff to meet with in-person students in smaller groups to provide specific instructional and content support. Teachers will provide face-to-face instructional support for students attending in-person learning on a rotating basis each day. Teachers will rotate being in the building to provide specific instructional support for in-person students. And that is what we have. I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. So, can you go back to the, the one right before or the, the chart? I think the chart is what I'd like to see. Who, who, um, does anybody have any questions while I look at this chart?
All right, it was really fast. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, nobody has any questions? How, so?
Yeah.
Yes. The original? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Well, just a quick question. Just how this is different from what we saw before in terms of the schedule? It, it looks, it, it looks to me like the, the idea was to make sure that the, the virtual learning that had been occurring will continue to occur. But if there are other things that are, maybe what's, what's also different is who's going to be in the building, which groups of students will be coming in. Is that right? Different than before?
So what we heard from, from our families specifically was that we wanted, they wanted to make sure that students retain their current schedule, classes and their teachers. But we also know that many, there are, we have population student groups that are not engaged in class. So we really need to offer support in two ways, with access and with supervision. So inviting students who would meet a, a matrix criteria. If we can invite those students in with the understanding that this is not necessarily school, it's really just about access and support. That would meet that criteria. Teachers, however, we've asked teachers to think about creating a rotation schedule so that we would have teachers on campus to support during asynchronous learning, face-to-face instruction.
Okay, uh, thank you for that.
I, I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does.
I have a question. With the targeted group, how many students are you going to be having in the building?
We're thinking, yes, sir, we're thinking roughly between 70 and 80.
So the ones that are doing the virtual instruction, is that more than 70, 80 students?
Yes, so they will be doing, they will continue with their instruction at home.
At home and you approximate how many students?
So we, we roughly have 595 students enrolled. So we would, we would have roughly 500 students at home.
Okay. And they will also have ample teachers trying instruction, or they'll be doing asynchronous learning with the targeted group, am I correct?
So, um, yes, sir. So during virtual, so those students who we do not bring in based on the CTSS or based on the matrix, those students will continue to experience virtual learning as they have now. The understanding is that for many of our students, virtual learning has been very successful. We have some students who need additional support and they typically are those targeted groups that I mentioned earlier. Students, yes, sir, students with disabilities and students who have barriers that sometimes go beyond the scope of the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, we would be bringing in our Level One L students, special education students, and our Tier Three students.
Okay.
Be coming into the building for that support.
Okay.
Could I possibly chime in with, um, maybe some clarity?
Yes, so this is Samantha DeLassio. She has done some fantastic work. She's a teacher here at Buford. But she's also been a member and really invested a lot of resources and time into the COVID committee.
Thank you Samantha for being here with us and, and helping to lend your voice to, for clarity.
No problem. Um, I think what the confusion might be is how teachers are gonna match to teach virtually and support these students at the same time. And so the, the idea is that by department, we will come up with a kind of rotational schedule where, say, I teach life science at Buford for the fourth graders. So let's say on Mondays, I come into the building and run my virtual classes from my room in the building. And our classes are set up where they're 90 minutes long online, but 45 minutes is kind of centered around the face-to-face virtual, uh, direct instruction with students. And then the 45 minutes after that is this asynchronous work where I still stay on the call in case a student needs help or has questions or needs support. But we're not still engaged in a lesson altogether as a class at that point. And those are the times when I'm in the building that I would be able to access the students within the building to help with support, either maybe bring them back to my room or just where, however process we set up where I would then provide some intervention for those students. So I, I think that's the vision of how it would look for being able to still teach virtually. So much, Ms. DeLassio. Our normal structure, but also be able to provide some hands-on support for those students who are in the building.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, you can take away that. I've been looking at it enough. Thank you. Any other questions for the Buford team?
So I was curious, Ms. DeLassio, you said it's a rotation. I mean, is your schedule, is it change from day to day? I mean, how is that looking for all teachers?
Well, we were presented with the plan this week and the, the kind of the task about starting to talk about how this rotation might look. I mean, as far as our normal day, we, we teach, you know, Monday through Thursday. Wherever we, we're at home, some teachers do go into the building, but we teach virtually 8:30 to 3:00, those four days a week, and then the completely asynchronous day on Friday. The moving into this hybrid, I, I hate to use, it's not even really a hybrid, but by moving towards having some students back in the building on a regular basis, that's the part that we need to figure out and our leadership team and has already asked that we start to talk in our PLCs about how, you know, we could construct this plan. And I think by department, because some of the departments are different sizes. Some teach both seventh and eighth grade students, so every department kind of needs to come up with what's gonna work best for the teachers and their students.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have a questions for the Buford team? Do you think, um, you guys have enough time, Ms. DeLassio, between now and like, and I think February 1st is still the kind of target deadline for introduction of in-person? Is that enough time? Sounds like a lot of work. Um, I, I mean, yeah, I, I think it is enough time, especially if there is that consideration of some division time to, you know, wrap our heads around this transitional time into our new model. However, I'm, I'm not even sure what, what word to use anymore these days, but that, you know, something like that would give staff enough time to get our plans in place, get schedules in place for teachers, figure out how we're best going to interact with the students hands, you know, face-to-face, as far as kind of interventions, I'm sure the things we typically do, we might have less access to or, you know, ability to because of these kinds of things. Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Delory, for your work here as well. Any other questions or comments about the Buford plan? It sounds like there's still a lot up in the air with the Buford plans, so I appreciate all of the hard work that you're putting in and will continue to put in or to make it all work. So, thank you. Who's next?
And, and I think, I thank Seda and Sam. Thanks for all of your work and your entire team. You guys have worked amazingly hard. You have the structure of the plan and now the details, and that's what you'll be working on next. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. So now we will turn to Charlottesville High School. We have Pam Brown. And Pam, are you presenting alone tonight? I know Dr. Yurizari is here, but Ms. Brown?
Um, hello, Dr. Atkins, members of the school board. And Dr. I is gonna be presenting our plan, and then if there are questions about teacher support or teacher interaction, then I'll take that part.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins, School Board, welcome aboard. Ms. Packer, good to see you. So, we're gonna present our option A first, and this is a plan that keeps the virtual pieces of our instructional plan right now. But we're gonna take advantage of the morning time to provide additional supports for many of our students. So you can see in this presentation, the 12:30 to 4 o'clock in this model would remain as it is right now with classes starting at 12:30, going to 4 o'clock, alternating between odd or even days. Where this plan differs a little bit from what we're doing now is we would offer supports in the morning, targeted supports from 9:00 to 11:30 each morning. And what we would do is we would target the supports by grade level or what we call cohorts here at Charlottesville High School, Monday through Thursday. And the targeted supports would be aimed at a few different groups of students. One would be our ESL students, and we have a pretty detailed plan with our amazing ESL team to not only take care of the needs of our ESL ones and twos, but also supporting our ESL three and four students as well throughout the school day. Our walk program, let me, sorry, here, let me move you guys around. Sorry, I couldn't see the presentation. Our walk program is a credit recovery program here that's very valuable to our juniors and seniors. So that program would be able to operate during this time as well. And our students that would receive a bulk of the instruction in the, in the building, in addition to ESL and walk, would be any student that is struggling. And they may be, you know, struggling with just accessing or struggling in the content areas as well. So what we want to do is identify those students. We have identified those students using our CTSS metrics and also our engagement and attendance data, and really hone in and provide reading, math, and counseling support for those students, and also provide some support in getting students organized, helping them through Canvas, helping them organize what they need to turn in, in, in various subject areas. So what that would look like is about 100 to 150 students coming into the building, Monday through Thursday, and getting the targeted supports they need, and we would monitor those students through a variety of measures that we have in-house, and those would also include some social emotional supports as well. And what this would allow us to do at the high school is focus on students that need the most support, allow us to focus our efforts in the morning with a smaller amount of students, which also means a smaller amount of staff that would need to come into the building in the mornings to work with students. And the groups that they would be working with, or faculty would be working with, would be smaller as well. So we could really pinpoint the supports our students need. And then what would happen, we would, we would break for lunch and we would then continue our afternoon classes, 12:30 to 4 o'clock, just like we're doing now. And Friday would allow some flexibility. Can you go back one more slide? I'm sorry, or two more slides? I'm sorry, Leslie, it's on the first slide. And Friday, we would, it would create some flexible enrichment time. So once we get our Monday through Thursday schedule set and, and working, we could look at bringing in some student groups that may not be included in the Monday through Thursday, especially in classes that are really hampered by the virtual instruction. That could be engineering, some of our performing arts, urban farming, any of those classes that really need that tactile learning or that, you know, that really hands-on learning. We could look at bringing those in in a similar fashion on Friday as well. Plan B or option, sorry, option B, sorry, Leslie, can you go two more now? Back to where you were? Testing your skills. Option B is the hybrid plan that we presented, uh, last time we presented our schedule. So this would include students coming into the building. Group A would come in, in person. Any group A virtual students would, would zoom in during that time. And during that time, group B, let's say on Monday, they would be doing asynchronous independent work. And that would again rotate on Tuesday. Our group B folks would be in live instruction, either in the building or virtual, while group A would be asynchronous, and that would rotate Wednesday and Thursday again. And Friday would remain very similar to what we're proposing on both plans.
Thank you, Dr. I. Appreciate your work there and for going back to the drawing board and bringing us another option. So I, we recognize how challenging all of this is and appreciate the thinking that you guys have done to make all of this happen. What questions we have about the hybrid model at the high school? I'm sorry, not the hybrid model, option A.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Uh, Dr. Um, Dr. I, with the option A, those students who are the targeted group will be doing instruction from 9:00 to 11:30? And the other group will, the virtual or virtual, 12:30 to, to 4:00? So will their day be complete with the targeted group at 12:30, or do they transition to optional learning?
So the folks, the students that would be coming in would be getting their support in the morning. And then, you know, we would break for 11:30 lunch and, and allow them some transition time. During the morning as well, I, I didn't point that out. What we would do is we would ensure that our students that are not coming into the building still have access to office hours in their individual subject areas as well. We would work with our teachers to shift the load for, for office hours so that our virtual, all virtual students would still be getting those office hour supports as well. So, Mr. Brown, you're asking if the students that were coming into the building, they would receive the same virtual instruction as the students that would not be coming into the building in the afternoon. So they would not be going, they would not be going to individual teachers in the afternoon. They would be receiving their instruction like everyone else virtually in the model that we are currently doing now.
So virtually meaning home, they'll leave the building?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, Dr. I. Yes, can you talk a little bit more about the, I think you said 150 students that you would have in the building about how those students would be selected or who, who they are?
Correct. Uh, we have multiple points of data currently with our students. You know, we, we obviously have grades. Uh, we have, you know, ESL students. We know that with the virtual, especially our, our ESL students, you know, our ones and twos that are, you know, still learning English are, you know, it's, it's difficult to learn, to do that virtually. So we do have our general information, but we have data. We use CTSS, and it's a multi-tiered level of supports. So we know which students are struggling in what areas, whether that's reading, whether that's math. And we can correlate that as well with their formative assessments in their classrooms. So we can pull that data together and we have a, you know, a list of students that we know need some additional support So we can pull that data together and we have a, you know, a list of students that we know uh, need some additional support that would benefit coming into the building. So we would use that data along with some of our social emotional data from our uh, counselors or school counselors and school social workers to make sure that we're supporting the whole child. But this plan would really focus on the students that the virtual environment is not working for them based on um, the data that we're using, which would be our CTSS data, our engagement data, our attendance data, and our grades as well. So we can kind of funnel that in. And we would start with our students that need the most support, and we would work our way backwards from that.
So let's say you have a a student um, that it's in um, you know, I'm gonna take a, just a popular class of biology or, you know, English non-class. And he or she is the only one or just a handful of students is not doing well virtually in that class would um, and and they have been targeted that maybe they should come back to school. So when they come back, how would that look if that teacher is still teaching that class virtually?
Because in the morning, remember, we don't start till twelve thirty. So what we would do is we would have signed, uh, you know, it may not be that individual teacher, but we would, let's say biology. We would have a biology teacher to help support that student here in the building um, during that nine thirty to eleven thirty time. Um, and what would happen is, let's just say with biology, with the teacher that's working with students that are here in the building, um, what we would do is we would work with my my biology team to make sure that that teacher's office hours are dispersed among the other teachers that are not in the building. So we would be able to help support our virtual-only students, but really support uh, face-to-face our students that may be struggling in one or more subjects, that we would really focus on the core subjects as well, uh, you know, English, science, uh, math, and our social sciences. So we feel that we would be able to now, we have to get it approved first and then work with our teachers to figure out what that schedule would look like. And part of that plan would also be working with the executive functioning, so helping our students organize, uh, helping our students focus on what's you know, in each individual class is most important, getting their work turned in. So we would have uh, other content areas here to help support our students as well.
Yeah. See, I just wanted to add that I was part of like a uh, virtual meeting this week with one of the young men I'm mentoring and with his guidance counselor, I don't know, s- seven or eight teachers, they all were there eight o'clock in the morning, you know, addressing one student who not getting it virtually to come up with a game plan. So I mean, the individual attention that that's going on, I I really applaud you and your staff for for um, doing it. So it's it's difficult, it's difficult times, but I I think that everyone's trying to help each other out through this, uh, you know, just kind of hanging on, uh, you know, it's a few more months, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
So, yeah, um, it it seems to me that you've done a great job in coming up with um, this option as a way to get us started and get some kids back in the building. Um, and I, you know, as we all would hope that as the situation with the virus gets better, that we will be able to adjust and get more kids back in the building. Um, I just want one question. So what about there's students who, um, you know, they're doing okay academically because they just tend to do okay academically regardless. They're, so they're not, you know, academically at risk, but they're really miserable in the virtual environment. Would those students, um, I mean, what happens with those students? They're just, you know, they really hate it, but they're somehow doing the work and getting by.
Yeah, with, you know, with with our staff being, you know, we we would basically be splitting our class throughout the day, so we would really need to target on the students that are by a lot of metrics, you know, academically, you know, need some support or e- even uh, socially, emotionally need some support. But we will, you know, we've started to get more of our uh, virtual clubs off the ground, um, some of our other activities. And what we try to do as well is that Friday would offer some flexibility. Uh, you know, it would still have to be low numbers. But uh, it would offer some flexibility to students that may not need that academic support Monday through Thursday, but you know, would benefit from coming into the building. You know, I do think we're all struggling virtually, um, you know, so I would really need uh, for our teachers to focus on the students that you know, our data is showing that these, you know, these students need some, you know, some additional supports. And you know, this plan would also allow, you know, plan, now it's plan B. The uh, the option B, what the high school could not do, um, and you know, that came up a few times is you know, honor some of the teacher requests that teachers may not be medically cleared to stay home, but may just have some, let's say, sick fa- family members or just some hesitancy coming in the building. What we, what we can be able to do a a little better in this plan is to, you know, allow the teachers that feel comfortable coming in and and working with our students to do that in the morning while still allowing the the virtual, the teachers that maybe don't feel as comfortable or maybe have some circumstances that don't qualify for uh, you know, the medical side, but still have some concerns to work virtually with our students in the morning as well. So that was something we weren't able to do with with plan with the with the now plan B that we can do with this plan a little better. There still may be, you know, a a few items we would need to work out. And it would also cut down the amount of students in the building at one time from about three hundred and fifty in the building to that one fifty. So it significantly reduces the amount of students in the building, the amount of contact between um, student to student and teacher to student as well. So you know, I'm not going to say it's safer because I don't think I can guarantee anything, but you know, numbers-wise, it is a better number to work with uh, in the building, especially coming off of winter break as well.
Great, um, I I thank you, and I I really appreciate um, what you've done and also what what the other um, principals have done to incorporate some of our feedback from before and also the, you know, the health situation in the community and pivot and come up with um, these these new plans. I I really, really appreciate all the work that you've done to listen to everybody and try to still get us going back to in-person, some kind of face-to-face learning. So thank you very much.
Okay, um, Ms. Packer, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, both of my questions are pretty much answered. Um, just the first one was if we were still going to be able to have office hours for option A. Um, and Dr. Yarizari answered that, that will still be an option. And then the second one was if we were going to have office hours for option B, I think that answer was a no, just because learning would start at nine o'clock. Um, but those are the two things I was wondering.
Yeah, you'd be correct there, Maddie. What 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 that plan B did not allow us to do is keep some of our office hours. And you know, for the students that are coming in the building, we're not going to be able to offer every single class because some of our classes are taught by one teacher, so they couldn't be in two places at one time. So in those situations, those teachers would remain virtual and keep their office hours in the morning and still provide those supports uh, for our teachers. Or students, I'm sorry.
Ms. Packer, can I ask you a question? Are the virtue, are the office hours um, been beneficial?
Yes, um, just like having the option to come in outside of our class period and just get extra help is really helpful.
Good, thank you. I think some, um, you know, maybe early on impressions was like, oh, that's just free time or they're sleeping or whatever. So it's really helpful to hear that perspective. Thank you. Um, okay, um, shall we move on, Dr. Atkins? Unless there's more questions, I'm sorry, board members, if there's any more. Miss Bryson Westburger or Ms. Torres?
I just had one question, and it was just because I I missed it. For the elementary school, the earlier presentation, all of the students who opted to come back virtual, is that what we said was happening at that level, or was it a targeted group?
It's a targeted group.
Okay, okay, thank you.
At K two, it would be the students, all of the students who have, families have indicated they want it face-to-face. And then from three to six, it would be the targeted groups, our L students, special education students, and then tier three students.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on to present to the board a day in the life of a student, I'd like to ask if any of our presenters would like to add any additional comments that you didn't get a chance to put in your presentation. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion. I just want to say thank you to all of the presenters. And um, I I wish the community could see the amount of time, effort, and work that goes into developing a presentation like this. We have principals who turn on a dime in order to make sure that uh, they have considered all of the angles with presenting the best plan to our board and to our community. So thank you to everyone for your efforts um, to get this done. And any comments from any of you?
Um, I would just.
Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to say that on behalf of the teachers, um, I've talked to a lot of teachers since we've learned about this new plan and all of the intricacies and everything, and I have not spoken to a teacher who is not for this plan. Um, for us, we feel like it's kind of the best of both worlds because we can get the kids in the building who need the support, who need that extra help. And as a special ed teacher, I know there's kids out there that really need this support. And um, but then it also is nice for the teachers to not necessarily feel like you have no choice, you know, that you have no voice or you have no if you don't fit the criteria, that you have no other way. So this was a nice, even down the road, you know, for teachers, I think, and the students who need the most help.
And I just had two quick things, well, just to piggyback on Pam, is that um, in the presentation, we will, we will have counseling services as well. And some of our partners uh, in the building, our TDT services and our counseling services that are teach, that our students right now are accessing virtually, they'd be able to access those face-to-face, which is really incredibly important. Uh, you know, we have our new clinical social worker. Um, Joshua came aboard uh, this month, and we have another social worker coming aboard to provide uh, clinical mental health um, in January, so that's going to be great timing there. And I do just want to say thank you to all of our teachers and our counselors and our faculty for really giving us the input and um, the the hard work they're doing. And uh, to all the students out there and and to the parents, those office hours and and Maddie Packer hit on it. Those office hours are incredibly important, and the more students we can get to those office hours to get that extra support. What we're seeing is the students that are going the class, accessing, and then following up with office hours are having the most success. So anything we can do to keep our students going to those, um, I just want to say, just keep keep going.
Thank, thank you all so much. We really appreciate your attention to the details of this and the hard work that has gone in it. I do think uh, the option As that have been presented addresses some of the concern that our families had about um, moving away from the amount of synchronous learning that's happening now virtually at the same time addressing the needs of our our most vulnerable students. So thank you. Now we'd like to um, go back to Erin Kirshner and Summer Thompson to present and um, Adam Hastings to present the day in the light at the K six level.
All right, thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and everybody in attendance tonight. Thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to share um, what it will look like when we, when we bring some of our littlest uh, children back into the building. Uh, so tonight, uh, I'll be sharing a little bit about what it looks like from a logistical standpoint. And the details that I will share will apply to both the option A scenario and the option B scenario. Um, and then Dr. Kirshner is going to discuss a potential academic schedule and some staff allocation associated with that, after which Dr. Hastings will discuss some of the Walker. On next slide, please. All right, so first of all, you'll see a beautiful picture there of a Venable classroom that Dr. Kirshner arranged to show um, some of the ways that we are adhering to the CDC and VDH guidelines. Um, so everything that we do or don't do within our schools um, is going to be reflective of those guidelines as they currently stand. Certainly, we will uh, revise things if and when any of those guidelines change. Um, at this time, all of our students and staff will be masked at all times, and as you can see from that picture, we will maintain six feet of distance at all times. Uh, our elementary cohorts, uh, the numbers of those cohorts generally range between about nine and twelve, and that really is dependent upon the square footage of each of the classrooms that we're using. And then there are a few schools that have larger numbers of children in some of the larger spaces within the building, such as the library. Um, all of our students will remain within their cohort for the entire day. We will not be mixing cohorts at all. Um, as you can imagine, in the past, you know, we would have had large groups together in the cafeteria or different children would be playing with different children from other classes on the playground. That will not be happening this year, the way that we have things set up. Uh, and additionally, we will also not be using any common spaces like we normally would, like the art room or the library where multiple cohorts of children would attend during the day. Um, and then obviously that has an impact on how we administer our specials education and some other things, and Dr. Kirshner is going to share a little bit about what's like later in our presentation. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so our arrival procedures. We have modified our arrival procedures to make sure that anyone entering the building, any child entering the building has had their temperature taken and their health check completed before doing so. And to that end, our bus riders will have their temperature taken before even boarding the bus using a palm scanner. They've got them installed on the insides of the buses. And then in in addition to that, as part of the bus transportation agreement, each child will also have a designated adult with them at the bus stop, whether that's a parent or a designated neighbor, um, so that if they did have a high temperature, they would be able to be escorted um, home. Our car riders will have their temperature taken before they exit the car, and then our walkers and bus riders will have their temperature taken at an entrance door, and all those entrances will be designated and clearly communicated. So each school will have designated entrances for specific groups of children. So for example, at Johnson, we're having our Cherry Hill walkers and our Cherry Avenue walkers use uh, the side cafeteria entrance, which we would tor- typically not do, uh, but it will help limit traffic at other entrances. All students will use hand sanitizer upon entering the building. We've got the stands that were provided to us by the division. Uh, and then we also just want to point out that the car traffic flow and the drop-off points may be different than in a normal year, um, simply to just try to help the traffic flow better. Um, all of these changes will be communit- communicated to families well in advance, so everybody knows where they're going. Um, and I also just want to put a quick plug in here that our arrival will definitely take longer than usual due to all the temperature taking. So just please plan accordingly and also know that we are going as.
God, we should have ordered some hot.
All right, next slide. Next slide, please, Leslie. Thank you. All right, so tardies, if a child is late to school, um, we're asking that the adult dropping them off stay until the health check is complete. Again, that's just to ensure that we are only allowing healthy children within the building. And then if a child's being picked up early for any reason, whether it's just an appointment or whatever, um, we're asking that the family call us as they're pulling up and leave time for us to bring the child out to the car. And again, that's to minimize extra adults coming in the building. Uh, additionally, if anything needs to be dropped off for a child during the day, like a lunchbox or mittens or anything, not that, not that elementary children ever forget anything. Uh, but when they do, each school is going to have a drop box or a table outside of um, the main entrance so that people can call the admin tech and say, hey, I I brought Johnny's mittens today, they're out here. Um, next slide, please, Leslie. All right, breakfast and lunch distribution. So as I mentioned earlier, students will not be using any of our common spaces. And so that also means that students will no longer be going through the breakfast line or the lunch line. So breakfast is going to be the grab-and-go bags, which a lot of the schools have already had. Um, and that will be delivered to their classrooms in the morning, so they'll already be there. There's no need to bypass. They're just going straight to their classrooms. Uh, the lunches will be prepackaged and students will have either a meat or a non-meat option, so that is a little bit different than the typical lunch choices would be. Uh, but again, that will be delivered to the classroom. Uh, students who would like to desire, or who would like to pack their own lunches may still do that, but nothing from home would be able to be shared. And that's a rule that we've had for forever, but it just bears repeating, especially in this situation. Um, lunch will take place in the classroom and or outside, depending on the weather. We certainly give teachers the flexibility. If they want to eat outside, they're welcome to do that. And unfortunately, we will not be able to host any celebrations involving food anymore, which personally to me is a huge bummer because I love those birthday cupcakes. But that's just not something that we can safely do in the current environment. All right, movement through the building. Um, so our students will largely be in their classroom, in their classrooms throughout most of the day. So there really will be minimal movement with the exception of the arrival and the dismissal. Um, and then as they're moving out to recess and or for a class bathroom break. To to facilitate that though, and to make sure that they are staying six feet apart, each building will have markers that are spaced six feet apart throughout the hallway. And you can see, um, there's a picture of Venable in the stairwell. Um, some stairwells will be up, some stairwells will be down. Uh, but those will be clearly marked with the signage that you see there, and we will review those things with students when they come back so that they know where they are and where and how they're moving through the building. We're encouraging staff to use their classroom. We're encouraging staff to use their classroom exterior doors whenever possible, if they have them, such as when they're escorting their kids out to recess, just again, to minimize the traffic within the building. And then some hallways in some buildings may be able to remain two-way if they're wide enough. So for example, at Johnson, our hallways are wide enough that we could have groups of children passing and they would be six feet apart. But then there will be some other hallways in other buildings that may need to be one-way. And again, that will be indicated by signage and communicated with students. Hey, bathroom usage. Whoever thought that I would be talking to the school board about bathroom usage, but here we are. So most, if not all of our pre-K kindergarten or first grade rooms have an attached bathroom. And so students in those classes will be able to freely use the bathroom throughout the day whenever they need to because they're in the same cohort. So there's no concern about mixing groups of children with those classroom bathrooms. Additionally, I know we've all worked to try to create some situations in which one particular class is able to use one bathroom that may not be attached to their classroom. So for example, I have a classroom potentially that would be in our library. They would be able to use a single-use bathroom that's not attached, and it would be reserved solely for their class. So again, we would avoid the mixing of cohort. Other classes that don't have their own designated bathroom will have scheduled bathroom breaks. And then after those bathroom breaks, once the whole class is through, then those bathrooms will be cleaned so that we can maintain the integrity of the cohort system. Each school also has a plan in place for students who need to use, obviously, the bathroom outside of their classroom scheduled time, because of course we know that's going to happen. All right, classroom cleaning. So you can see those tags that were provided to each school, which is wonderful. That indicates the current status of the room. And so when a teacher would come into work in the morning, the tag would be green, which indicates that the room had been cleaned and disinfected. And then the teacher flips those cards so that the red is showing, meaning that the room is in use or hasn't yet been cleaned. And then we just repeat that process each day. And that way, we are all on the same page about exactly what has been done in each room. Additionally, teachers have a bottle of disinfectant and a designated rag with which to wipe down high-touch areas or anything. You know, if a kid coughs on his desk, she can walk by and, you know, clean that off right there if she so chooses. And then they'll also spray down all of the desks and all of the chairs at the end of the day. And then there are specific things in place for teachers who are pulling out small groups. So for example, a special education teacher or a reading specialist, they will engage in specific cleaning protocols, like everyone washes their hands before they leave the original cohort classroom. Everybody washes their hands once they get back to the classroom. The teacher is spraying down the areas where the students were working. And then finally, classrooms will be fogged with the disinfectant Mr. Bogger on at least a weekly basis and then as well as whenever there's any sort of identified illness within the building. And that's in addition to the daily cleaning and disinfection routine that takes place. All right, recess. So our students will have somewhere between 45 and 60 minutes of recess per day, based on the schedules that we've created so far. We really felt like it was necessary to give them some more time than usual. Typically, they would have usually like a 30-minute chunk at some point during the day. But since they no longer have those natural transitions to lunch or to specials or, you know, just walking different places, we just really felt like we needed to give them a little bit of extra time. And these recesses may be a combination of free play or possibly even PE or supervised walk and talks around this area. Again, cohorts of students will remain together at recess. They will not mix with other cohorts of the same grade level. We probably will have cohorts, multiple cohorts out at one time, but they will have specific designated areas. And then within those areas, students will remain six feet apart. Masks will still be worn, even though they are outside, because that's the current CDC guidance. They will have some opportunities to take individual mask breaks by moving even further away from the group as necessary. And then schools are also planning on providing some individual equipment like jump ropes. I suggested hacky sacks, and they all told me to go back to the 1990s. But just different things like that, that our kids would be able to use that they alone would handle and that would be just theirs to bring in, bring out. And then we're also working with PE teachers to brainstorm games that don't involve contact or equipment. All right, visitors. I hate what I'm about to say, but I have to say it because this is the best way to keep people safe. It's going to sound unwelcoming and unfriendly, which you guys know goes against everything that we want our schools to be. But given the current circumstances, we will not be able to allow visitors into our building. And you know that breaks all of our hearts because we love seeing you guys come in for recess and lunch and just to come and hang out. But to keep everybody as safe as possible, we will be limiting visitors to only business that cannot be possibly completed virtually. And so that might include, you know, we will have some student teachers coming in. We will have some substitute teachers obviously needing to come in. And then occasionally we'll have some of our maintenance professionals come in. As I mentioned earlier, we will have a drop box or a table that's set up outside that can be used as much as possible. And that will be even used for some things that we might typically do in person. So for example, a new enrollee comes and we need to make copies of the birth certificate. That's going to be a drop spot rather than having additional people come in the building. And again, at this time, unfortunately, we will not be able to provide tours for prospective families. And all of our after-school clubs, guest speakers, et cetera, will be suspended, although we are certainly encouraging our teachers to reach out and engage guest speakers virtually. All right, dismissal. Similar to the arrival time situation, we anticipate a dramatic increase in our car traffic. And as a result, many of our buildings will be using alternative exits or traffic patterns. So just stay tuned by at the communication from your school indicating what your particular scenario is. Additionally, some schools may also have staggered pickup times for families to lessen the amount of traffic at any one time. Okay, and all right. So in order, again, we've talked a lot about trying to minimize children being in the hallway. And so kids obviously are going to need to come to the nurse, whether it's a regularly scheduled type of situation to receive a medication or it's more of an emergent situation. And so in order to try to minimize children coming up to the clinic, we're doing two things. The first is equipping our classrooms with basic first aid items like Band-Aids, gauze, things like that, so that those kinds of small needs can be met by the classroom teacher. And then the second is that we're going to dispatch the nurse or a member of the medical management team down to a classroom to assess the need for further care, rather than have a child come up to the clinic if they're not feeling well. And then the treatment and the outcome will be dependent upon the symptoms exhibited by that child. And then finally, each school has a designated quarantine room that is separate from the clinic. The quarantine room is going to be reserved for students who have COVID-like symptoms and are waiting to be picked up. And then the clinic will be used for some of the more routine medical needs that can't be met in or in the hallway outside of the classroom, for example, like a tube feeding. And that's all I have. I just want to say that while the logistics are complicated, we really have tried to make a plan for every tiny detail that we could think of, everything from like, how does a child get tissues within the classroom without getting up? How do they make a lunch choice without having to go and move their little magnet? And we've worked out a lot of those details, but certainly we will not have worked out every single one, but we are ready to pivot and meet any of those needs that we didn't anticipate. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Kirschen.
Thanks, Summer. On the next slide, we're presenting a hypothetical schedule for a K through four student. This schedule would be the same if we just had K two in the building or if we have K four in the building. And you can see that we've lined up an in-person schedule with a virtual schedule so that you can compare how they're similar and how they're different. The priority will be for all students to receive excellent instruction on the same skills and topics at a similar pace, regardless of whether they're in person or participating virtually. We've shifted our start time, as Dr. Atkins mentioned earlier tonight, back to 7:30 for in-person arrival and 8 o'clock for morning meetings. In this schedule, each instructional block is 30 minutes long. During the day, we anticipate that each student would receive at least 60 minutes of reading instruction, 30 minutes of writing and foundational skills instruction, 60 minutes of math instruction, 30 minutes of science or social studies instruction, 30 minutes of morning meeting, 30 minutes of lunch, and 30 minutes of exploratory arts or what we call specials instruction. Each grade level in a building would arrange these 30-minute instructional blocks differently in order to best utilize our space and our staff. You'll notice also that within the 7:30 to 2:30 day, we, as Summer mentioned, were able to make sure we schedule for 45 to 60 minutes of recess and whole classroom bathroom breaks. We've already mentioned why that's particularly important. We're sensitive to the fact that none of our students have had to maintain focus and engagement for long periods of time in our current situation. And so each school and grade level is working to incorporate what will be critical breaks and opportunities for social interaction within the day. In any of the in-person instructional blocks, students could be participating in a whole group lesson or completing independent work and receiving individual feedback from the teacher. Independent work will not always, but might include using Chromebooks to engage with the content through some of the great technology resources that we've been using so far this year and that have been really engaging for students. Next slide. So in order to accommodate both in-person and virtual learners, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, each school has had to expand the number of personnel used as classroom teachers. We wanted to share a little bit about how that would happen and how a day in the life of an elementary school might change a little bit. First, we've had to pull personnel who might have been serving in specialist roles to be classroom teachers. Each school's plan is slightly different, but specialist pull may include gifted resource teachers, reading specialists, math specialists, instructional coaches, specials areas teachers, and ESL teachers. Students may have a new classroom teacher when we return due to supply and demand. We have made every attempt to keep students with their current teachers and the cohorts as much as possible. Special education services will not be interrupted as a result of these changes. With whom and where students are served may change, however. For example, we'll only pull students out with other students from their class in order to avoid mixing cohorts. And we will build time into the day for the teachers to sanitize the spaces between groups. We're aiming for one adult per classroom, but students whose IEPs call for additional adult support will still be able to have that support in the classroom. Some intervention models may change due to safety measures and or our staffing plans as well. Students whose reading or math intervention teachers have become classroom teachers will be able to receive additional support from their classroom teachers, given the reduced number of students in each classroom. Our specialists, even while they are serving in a new role, will still be on hand to consult with the classroom teachers regarding how to continue to support students' progress in the subject area in which they had been receiving more specialized intervention. We'll also have time during that proposed asynchronous week for interventionists and classroom teachers to map out those supports together to make a good plan for students to continue making progress. And as for specials, we wanted to make a note about art, music, PE, and library. All students will still have access to specials area instruction, but the schedule and the delivery method will vary by school based on our staffing scenarios. So for example, some schools may have live in-person instruction. Some schools may have live Zoom instruction where someone else is in the classroom supervising, but the PE teacher is on Zoom. Some schools may have a combination of live Zoom and asynchronous instruction. And some schools may have a combination of any of those models, really just depending on the situation of the specials area teacher and scheduling constraints for the school. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Hastings to talk about Walker's specific scheduling for instruction in the face-to-face environment.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Atkins, members of the board, Ms. McKeever. Really, I only have two slides tonight due to the great work of Dr. Kirschen and Ms. Thompson. They've already laid everything out for you, and I'm just going to give you a little more detail about Walker. This slide here is a very fancy way of saying that Walker's current schedule is actually very much adaptable to a face-to-face environment in which all families or a portion of families would come back to a face-to-face environment. As you know, Walker's a pretty large school, and we are right at our max class size in many cases currently. And so what that means is that we don't have a luxury of assigning some teachers to virtual and some teachers to face-to-face. There's not an even split. It's just not a perfect world that I have the right number of language arts or math or science associated teachers who want to be virtual versus face-to-face. What we can do, however, is adjust the instructional day. If you might think about the way a high school teacher might teach different sections, where our teachers could teach a section of face-to-face, a section of face-to-face, and a section of virtual. And so we would never have it. We would not plan to have a teacher teaching face-to-face and virtual students at the same time concurrently. But during a teacher's day, a teacher might teach some face-to-face and some virtual. This really hits at the heart of that priority that's the top of this slide. Walker is a place where we take students from six elementary schools and we put them together to build community. It's already difficult to do that with all the new faces we need to meet. And we really believe that in order to continue the success that we've had this year, we need to maintain a priority of preserving current team rostering to the greatest extent possible. I do not want children to have to get to know new classmates and new teachers if I can avoid it. And right now, I believe we can avoid it, and I can keep teachers, children with their current teachers and current classmates. Can I get the next slide, please? Right now, Walker, in many ways, if you think about six elementary schools coordinating what we just saw, Walker is six elementary schools worth of children across two grades. And so we still have some questions that are unanswered, but we're very fortunate that we have two teacher teams who are working on this and really kind of waiting on tonight's decision-making to make some final details. I'm really proud of the work those teams are doing. We have a team that's focusing on instruction and how we can look at master scheduling and how we can look at rotation of classes. That's chaired by Susan Vaniskey, one of our fifth-grade teachers. And we have another group that's looking at instructional spaces and safety and how we might leverage this wonderful campus that we have here to expand the classroom outdoors. And that group's led by Mr. Chamberlain, our ISTEM teacher. We really are keeping equity at the focus here in this work and trying to find a way that gets every child what they need in their instructional environment, whether that's in face-to-face or whether that's in a virtual environment. Like the elementary schools, we anticipate that we're going to have to pull staff members who would not otherwise be traditionally a classroom teacher. Right now, it looks like it would be about 11 staff members at a maximum. That would change, of course, depending on which option would be chosen tonight or which option would be chosen moving forward. And we have some other questions that we need to still address, depending on finalizing of family intent requests and staff intent requests as to how we would continue to offer specials. As you've heard me say in previous meetings here with you, it is absolutely critical that we continue our ability to offer the electives that we've offered to our children because for so many of our kids, our elective experiences are the bright spots in their day. Our elective teachers and our PE teachers have done a masterful job this year adjusting their entire program in order to still provide students with two electives and PE each week. And we're very hopeful that we can continue that moving forward. But that is 1,200 individual variables for electives, 1,200 scheduling variables that need to be adjusted every time we adjust that schedule. So we try to only adjust it once. So once we have some finalized details, we'll have some clear information about how electives will be offered. But if what's happened so far is any indication, I'm very confident that we'll be able to keep doing that. That is it for my Walker slides.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hastings, Dr. Kirschen, Ms. Thompson. Appreciate all of that effort. It's incredibly overwhelming. I can't imagine all of the effort that has gone into creating them as I sit here overwhelmed. So, Dr. Atkins, did you want to transition to the next day in the life?
And she may have stepped away for a moment, but I didn't know if the board had any questions for Dr. Kirschen or Ms. Thompson or Dr. Hastings about their day in the life presentation?
So. Anybody have any questions?
I do, a little bit. First of all, I think what you have put together, all of you, is wonderful. And I have no questions about the schedule or the plan and what the day looks like for students. I think you've done an outstanding job of putting together all of the pieces of this weird puzzle. So my questions have to do with health issues. And I wanted to just ask a little bit about that. I know that, I guess, the students will be checked for fever when they arrive. And I gather that there will be some kind of health check. And so my, you know, my questions are like this, like, so what if student doesn't have a fever but is coming in and has a runny nose or student has a cough but no fever? What, sort of what happens then? How is that viewed in the light of our current situation? And yeah, so how is that viewed?
I think Ms. Powell will be able to answer that question.
Sure.
Division Wild Policy, I suspect.
It is. And we're having another discussion in Q and A tomorrow with admin and nurses to go through those, you know, processes more in-depth as we get closer to having more students on campus face-to-face. But in general, at any time, a student could be referred to the nurse for further evaluation if there's concern about symptoms. And what's going to play into the process heavily at that point is what are the known health conditions for that student? For example, if the nurse and the family, you know, they know this kid, the student. For example, if the nurse and the family, you know, they know this kid, the student always has allergies around this time of year or has a propensity to have issues with allergies. That doesn't mean that the nurse might, you know, nurse may still evaluate them at school if they start, you know, having a lot of symptoms. But at that point, there could be discussions with the family, discussions with the doctor. But, you know, that's just something that it's really hard to, we can't say that there's a universal protocol because it is going to become somewhat, well, there's a universal protocol, but each situation is specific as far as, you know, how it's evaluated. And a lot will have to do with whether there's a known other, you know, medical condition like allergies, for example, that's a common one. But a cold, what we hear all the time, and Beth Baptist has heard this more than me because she communicates so closely with the pediatricians and the health department. But in this environment, a cold is not, oh, it's just a cold anymore. Beth, would you like to add any to that?
No, we would need to follow what Kim said as far as what what are the other conditions? Also, if there are siblings or other siblings having some of the same issues as anybody reported having COVID exposure in the home. So it, it really is a case-by-case, and nurses would look at, are there multiple symptoms that are happening as well?
Well, let me just just follow up then. And if 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 there is an identified case, what is the protocol then? If if, anyway, there's a case that's identified at a school, what happens at that point?
So we have actually some extensive protocol documents that Beth Chuck has been putting the final polishes on for us and formatting them in a way to make it as easy as possible for folks to to follow. And that particular protocol is one that we're formatting with two columns and different color groupings. It's two pages worth of steps that will be followed. But in general, I mean, it outlines who who communicates with who. There's a lot of communication involved there. And I don't know if you want me to, I actually, we need to bring the protocol up, to be honest with you, to step through all of it. But it is something that will be well-understood, and it's a really nice-looking document that we have that'll be provided to all the families. Also, Dr. Kraft, before families send their students in for in-person, and we've already been doing this with the special with the sped students that come in for in-person services, families have to sign a form that they understand the daily health self-screening that needs to happen before their student reports to the school. There is, and there's also, you know, different explanations on there, the steps that we'll take if there's, you know, a concern about symptoms or whatever. So all of that's part of paperwork that families need to sign off on before their student attends for in-person learning, because the daily self-screening at home and that partnership with the families is really critical.
We'll also be in touch with the health department, who will help guide with who we need to contact and what needs to be done at that point when they hear the individual circumstances of the case. So much of this has got to be done individually and not, this is what happens if we have a case universally.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I just, you know, for some of the families who are listening, you know, they may have some questions like that. And I know we need to, you know, move on with our with our approval process, but maybe that's something we will revisit again, like in January, and talk a little more about it.
I I believe the plan is to bring the protocols document to, to, you know, put that forward facing in early January, because we've we've had the protocols in the background for a while. But there's a really nice document that's that Beth Chuck and Chrissy Vick are compiling right now. And it's, it makes, it takes a lot of the protocols that we've had, things like how to handle cases or even not just an actual confirmed case, but an exposure. That's covered in the protocols for both students and staff.
Are we going to have a dashboard? Okay.
We are. We're in the process of getting that up in live.
Thank you.
We've had very few, just less than five cases in our school division, closer to three. And but we will put that dashboard up, and we're moving forward on that. So thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions, or shall we go to what Dr. Atkins is recommending?
Whatever, whatever you would like. I mean, I have a couple of questions, but I'm happy to wait.
How do we let Dr. Atkins recommend something before we have more questions about things?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. So I want to make a couple of comments. I think, again, thank everyone for their presentation. Earlier during the elementary school presentation, we did mention that we would allow our families to work with their individual principal at the schools in order to make adjustments to the option that they have selected, if that's necessary. We will ask parents to only request a change if it's absolutely necessary. Principals will try to accommodate. Now, teachers will try to try to accommodate the request, but it's going to be important that it be for only those circumstances that our families will not be able to work out and would have to make a change. So we are currently in the virtual model with less than 50 students coming into our building now for face-to-face. We are recommending that we move to Phase Three under the condition that our board come back together on January 7th to assess the metrics and to look, we would be looking for our CDC incident rate per 100,000 to move closer to 200 or under 200. We're going to hesitate in identifying a specific metric, but we want to see the trend going down. We want the trend to be headed towards 200, as low, close to 200 as possible or below. We would recommend that, starting January 11, 2001, that our schools start preparing for Model A, and that would be at the elementary and secondary level, K6, and then seven through 12, the Model A. And that synchronous learning occur at the time that this says that it starts January 11, but I'm going to recommend that the synchronous learning not be January 11, that it be at a time that's appropriate for each individual school. And let the schools determine when that will happen.
You mean asynchronous learning, right?
The asynchronous, I'm sorry, Ms. McKeever. The asynchronous learning in order to allow our teachers to set up their classrooms happen at a time that's appropriate to the individual schools. We, I am recommending that our students start returning to the building at the elementary school level for face-to-face learning with the targeted groups, January 19, provided that the metrics indicate that it is appropriate to do to return at that time. I also recommend that our secondary students, again, following Model A, start returning to the building, Bucat and Charlottesville High School, for face-to-face learning, February 1st. Again, if the metrics indicate that it is appropriate to start that return. So I'll be more than happy to answer questions. Leslie, would you change this date on January? And make, instead of it being a specific date, sometime during January, February timeframe, that we assign days or weeks that our teachers can set up their classrooms? And Ms. McKeever, I'm happy to answer any questions if you might.
Okay, so this is obviously for the elementary case, pre-K6. Is this, are you recommending option, what option, do you want to talk about option for the secondary as well? Or?
Model A for secondary. I am recommending Model A for secondary, that we maintain our virtual program at Bucat and Charlottesville High School, and targeted groups of students return to the building. Specifically, it would be our special education students, our L students, and our students as identified by Bucat and Charlottesville High School as needing additional face-to-face support.
Okay, great. And would that start, because I know that the committee recommended like the February 1st timeline. Are you kind of haven't seen a similar timeframe, like a differential in timeframe between elementary? And I guess there's really not that many changes to the secondary. Anyway, I'm sorry.
I would recommend that the secondary keep the same schedule, the February 1st, where they're phasing the students back in into the building. Yes.
Great. Okay, we can, I think, take away the the screen, the spreadsheet and or PowerPoint. Do we have, so thank you for your recommendations. Thank you to your team and staff for what can only be monumental task. There's no right answer here. And we have, if we talk to 100 people, we will get 100 different opinions. And I just really want to clarify for this community how difficult it is, given these numbers. What really matters is that we continue to mask, continue to be in our bubble and continue to wash our hands and to take care of one another. That is the only way we're getting back to school on any regular basis, which of course is the goal of this school board and this division. So these conversations have been incredibly challenging and will continue to be. And it's something that certainly this board is up for, up to the task for. And this division has been, has demonstrated repeatedly that they are. So I'm happy to answer, have these questions come before us from the board. But I just really need the community to step up and make these numbers continue to be, to get these incident numbers down to 200 or less. Now, who has the question?
I have a question to start with. I know in the presentation from before, I for, I forget who made the suggestion, maybe it was an email. But we talked about revisiting the numbers every two weeks. What will our procedure or protocol be for that? Will it be on our dashboard that we're setting up? Or how are we going to communicate that, like, you know, this, we revisited the, two weeks later, our incidents are report? Like, how are we just monitoring that and informing the community? Since that would be the trigger for, you know, changing some aspects of the plan? Or is this plan, the Plan A, is that no matter what our incidents are? Is that just, this just our plan to make virtual work for everyone? Or will that two, more than 200 case number trigger everyone back to where we are now?
So I think I'm going to miss Moorsburg, Bryson Moorsburger, answer part of your questions. We would use the metrics and the review of the metrics to determine the continuation of moving towards face-to-face. So the first decision point that the board would be making, one is tonight, to give approval to continue to work towards a face-to-face and switching the date from January 11th to January 19th. When the board meets on January 7th, we would ask that the board revisit the metrics and either affirm students coming back starting January 19th or take additional actions to push it further out if we're seeing the trend that the metrics are still inclining and that they have not come down to the very low 200s or even below 200. And each two weeks, I I would, I know it's a burden on all of us to meet so often, but I would recommend that that these meetings be public so that we can have a robust dialogue about the metrics and we can hear everyone's voice as to whether or not we will be moving forward or we will push that timeline out further.
I don't, I mean, for, as a school board member, like, this is critical. I don't see this as a burden at all. I think every two weeks is absolutely manageable. And we just have to keep a number, keep our eyes on the on the number. And, you know, I I see this as like, okay, if we get to some baseline where we can get the pre-K2 to school by January 19th, when do we bring the rest of the school, you know, back? That's, you know, rest of the fifth grade, rest of the sixth grade. So that's just where I see our role is continuing to monitor the data so that we can get more people back to school. And I, or in the alternative, if we have to, if the numbers go up skyrocket for some reason. What question, other questions?
Dr. Atkins, you mentioned earlier that, I guess it was the state board is meeting or some other groups are meeting to try to provide a little more clarity for local school divisions and local school boards to have the best metrics to make, you know, to base our decisions on. Do you know when we might get that information?
I do know that that the Department of Education has made a recommendation to BDH. They have that information and they are looking at that now. So as soon as they complete the review of the recommendation from DOE, they will communicate that to DOE, and then they will get it out to all of the school divisions and to the school boards.
Okay.
I can't definitively say what that timeline will look like. I just know that it's in their hands now, and they are reviewing.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, did you want to ask your question, so?
Sure, thank you. A couple of questions and then just a couple of requests maybe for the next meeting. Just curious, I know Kim and lots of people have worked really hard on the mitigation policies and practices, putting together handbooks. Do we have a handbook that has been shared out to each of the schools so that they're not having to recreate the wheel, so to speak? Or are we doing that?
That's what, so tomorrow, when we meet with the admin and nurses group, we have a big Zoom tomorrow. That's what we're going to be sharing is the preview of that document. And then, once we get the final review from all of the stakeholders, then it would become a public-facing document. But that's, we're, we're in the polishing stage.
Okay. And then, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, and I was saying, it is an actual manual.
Okay, great. And then, just to clarify, so health systems or any flags? Again, we talked about this a little bit, but it will be clear as far as within the building, who might be making that call to ask that a student be picked up if if they're symptomatic? Is that nurses, multiple people?
It's the nurse. Primarily the nurse, yeah.
And then, in prior meetings, also, we had asked and had concerns about hiring extra nurses or having, in case, you know, a nurse is out. So I was just curious if if we had had any movement or progress on that. And then also, along the same lines, just a plan, a division-wide plan for subs, if subs are needed, and whether we have answers tonight, but I'd love to have a discussion about that.
We can't find nurses. We have had two openings and have, Dr. Hubbard and his shop have, has done a great job with advertising, and we actually interviewed a couple of nurses for an opening at Venable. And the one that we selected changed her mind, turned us down. So we don't have anybody else that I'm aware of to even interview at this time. So as of now, we don't have a nurse at Venable, and our floating nurse retired this month. So we're down nurses. We just can't find them right now.
And is that RNs or can LPNs?
LPNs can do it.
Okay.
And we are actively recruiting nurses. We've sent the job application to every major nursing college. It's spreading as far down as Tidewater up to JMU. Been in contact with them. We've been, we're even looking at, can we afford to contract with, like, nursing agencies to come in? And that's extremely expensive. So we're looking at every avenue we can to make sure that, uh, we're going to be having some some safety in the building for our students and our teachers. But it's really a very hard-to-fill position right now. We're doing everything we can to fill.
Right. I know we're short nurses in our, in my agency as well. And then, in the future, if we could just have an update on maybe the HVAC, the air filtration status? Again, another meeting.
One quick bit of good news, all the materials are scheduled to arrive December 22nd. So there'll be a lot of activity happening in the buildings. It may not see as much of it till right after the Christmas holiday, but yep, that's happening. Yep, that's happening.
So we'll have an update on that hopefully at the next meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. That's it for me.
Madam Chair just had a couple of questions. Dr. Atkins and Beth had talked about that, you know, we didn't really want to be tied down to one matrix. But, you know, I keep hearing, in the public keep hearing, you know, below two hundred. If you could just take a moment and explain what that number is just for, I think we're about fifty people viewing. That's on this and probably a lot more on TV and Facebook.
Two hundred is the incident rate per hundred thousand of population. So that's the standardization factor that gets used across every locality. We have about half of the hundred thousand. So that's one reason I also give you. The raw numbers each time that we have over a two week period. That's not to say our number or try to make our number smaller or larger. It's just to show what the actual count is, but it's based on a standardization of per hundred thousand. Would be the, the case count. And they use that for all, all the localities and, well, really in, in this country. Since it's a CDC measure. So we're not looking just at actual case counts. We're looking at the standardization to help us be able to compare across localities.
And my other question is more or less a comment that I have received from several kind of apprentices out in the community. About, you know, since most of our students will, in all of the scenarios, still would be virtual. And I get questions about if a student checks in, this is probably more for Buford and high school, if they check in. That they, the teacher want to be able to see them. And I'm not sure the policy or the procedure for, you know, once they check in and then if they're not visible. What that should. Look like, I mean, what, what the. Policy should be if the, if the student checks in, but this teacher can't see them. So. I, I'm, I wasn't sure on what to respond to be, to give them. So, but.
Some, Mr. Wade. Specifically our high schools and our, our Buford, and they've talked to their students about turning on cameras. We don't want to make a rule that every student has to have their cameras on. We want students to have the cameras on because they want to have them on. So our teachers work very diligently setting up the parameters for the cameras. And for engagement and what that means, while giving students some autonomy. And the operation of their cameras. So, Dr. I, you want to add anything to that? We, we want to make sure that we are engaging students in the right way. And not penalizing them because for various reasons, they may choose not to have the camera on.
You're correct. What we're seeing is, you know, sometimes it's a bandwidth issue, sometimes, you know, you know, there's some other issues there. So what we're doing is we're just heavily encouraging students to turn their cameras on, especially when they're in small groups. You know, the requirement is they're there and they're actively participating, but that does not include the camera being on necessarily.
And just for clarification, Dr. Atkins. What we, what you asking for us tonight is to approve. You and staff to continue to monitor, to move towards a. January nineteenth opening? Or, or no, that date has, you left that open?
I'm asking the board to approve. Returning using Model A with targeted groups at the elementary school level. It would be pre-K through two students returning face to face. From grades three through six, it would be targeted groups returning face to face, special education. Our Level One L, ELL students. And also students who are in Tier Three, targeted assistance. They would be starting to return January eleventh.
No.
I'm sorry, January nineteenth. I'm sorry, I'm getting stuff now. January nineteenth. Provided that when the board meets on January the seventh. Review the metrics, that the metrics indicate it is appropriate to return. For the secondary level with Buford and the high school, we are recommending Model A. That students, our L students, special education students and other targeted students who need assistance. Will return to the building starting February first. And all of the students would remain virtual.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to offer a motion at this point, Madam Chair?
If you so move, yes.
Yes, I would like to do that. I would like to move that we approve. The superintendent's recommendations regarding the return to learn plan. Under the new Model A. May have to tweak the wording of this motion, but I think you get the gist of it. I'd like basically that we approve the superintendent's recommendations as presented this evening.
I like the seconded.
I just think, based on the incredibly limited information I'm receiving regarding third and fourth grade. And even fifth and sixth grade, like, this is new. So I would like to have additional communication around. Kind of what our plan is to get the third and fourth and fifth and sixth graders back into the building. After our, and if, you know, this passes, if after the initial option A is underway. That's just, just something to, like, obviously, my goal is to get everybody back in the building. But I do think that, given the numbers. And trajectory, it will be helpful to have just a smaller group of kids in the class, in the schools. Before we get a much larger group of children. And this way we're serving students who need it the most. So I'm gonna support this plan. Mostly, I think it continues to can kick the can down the road about when we're gonna start everything. Because of the metrics constantly changing. But I do, I do want to make the commitment to the public that we want to get our students back. Especially the youngest and the most vulnerable of our students. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
So Jennifer, I just wanted to clarify, is what you asking, is that an addendum that you want to the emotion to have? Would you request it?
Returning kid, kids, students, the third and fourth and fifth and sixth grades?
Yes. Yeah, I thought you wanted some additional type of information on that cohort.
I mean, I think at the next meeting, if we could talk about a timeline for returning those students back to school.
So that's, that's a request for Dr. King?
Yeah, not, not part of this motion, though.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back to the board, Mr. McKeever, January seventh.
Perfect, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I always feel like I'm missing people when I say thank you to people, so I def, I, I, but I definitely want to thank the COVID committee. We're, you know, continuing to get their input as we move forward. So thank you for all of your efforts and work. Can we go ahead and take, I wanted to say before we vote, Ms. Packer, do you have any questions or comments?
Not any that I can think of, but I do think option A is like a step in the right direction to getting students back to school. So just my input.
Perfectly and very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. I'm not sure if Ms. Perry, Ms. Perrier had to leave at six thirty five, so I'm not sure if she'll be available.
I've just notified the people that we're taking the vote. So as soon as we take the boat, the vote. I have a message in the chat that I will send to the group.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm seven minutes late.
Okay, so can we take the vote now?
But I love my school division.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Moersberger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
So much. Dr. Atkins, do you need anything else from us right now?
Now, I, I just want to again say thank you to the entire team and all of our teachers and staff who have worked so. And principals who have worked so hard and long hours to make this happen. So thank you for your creativity and willingness to hang in there to create model after model. Until we get the right ones. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna let all those people go and we can talk about the budget now. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Delessia, Dr. Kirchner, Ms. Thompson, Dr. Hastings, Dr. I. The whole team, thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Atkins, what's next?
The next item on our agenda for discussion is to talk about. Our budget and the process that we will use for developing our budget. Ms. Hoover?
One day I am going to remember before we get off of this, do I need myself? Good evening, Chair McKeever, Dr. Atkins and board members. We're gonna shift gears and start talking about our budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Next one. This presentation will first cover the closeout. Of fiscal year twenty twenty. Kim's gonna present the demographics and enrollment information. And I'll come back and share with you the state outlook and what we know at this point. We have closed the book of fiscal year twenty twenty. The auditors met with the audit committee two weeks ago. We hear their report. And we just wanted to bring to you. Where we were, where we ended the year. We started the year with a fund balance of seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And we added this year fifty one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. To bring our fund balance to seven hundred and seventy one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. We will make a technical adjustment to our budget. To add this fifty one thousand, one fourteen to our FY twenty two budget. Just wanted to remind everybody of our priorities. As we go through the budget development for FY twenty two. We will focus on maintaining the continuity of the high quality instruction programs that we have. We want to recruit and retain high quality teachers and staff to support and maintain our programs. In everything that we do, we will do through a lens of equity and consideration of our budget. Next one. Anyone think over with demographics?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members, Dr. Atkins and our community. We just have a few slides here about enrollment and demographics that we look at this time of year, each year. And so first, taking a look at diversity and how that has moved over the decades. And we always provide this information sort of ten years at a, at a time. So if you look back to June, end of year, June two thousand, you can see the blue section of the circle. Our white represents white students, the orange section, black students, and then the gray section is all other. And we've talked about this before, how what has changed is that that all other category has been growing substantially. It grew ten percent from two thousand to two thousand and ten, and then it's grown another six percent from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. And what's interesting is that, and I've shared this with you in the past, twenty ten. Is the last year of what we call single ethnicity reporting. After twenty ten, the reporting on ethnicity changed drastically. And we went from having seven categories where you would just choose what you predominantly identify as, I guess. And it became now up to as many as thirty three categories in a year. And so there's a lot going on behind these numbers, starting with next year, when we, when that June twenty ten becomes June of. End of year, June twenty eleven. You'll start to see those last two boxes in this metric be more like apples and apples comparison. Because then at least those two pie charts will both be based on how students identified themselves when the system changed. And it was no longer what they called single ethnicity. Next slide, Julia. I'm sorry, that would be Leslie, sorry. Forget who's driving here. So this is a look at our percentage of students or proportion of students who are economically disadvantaged within our student population. And one thing to note here is that overall, and I did not put this on the slide and I should have. But we have not changed significantly as far as our overall percentage of economically disadvantaged students since twenty ten. In two thousand, the overall percentage of economically disadvantaged students was forty four point seven, so almost forty five percent. In twenty ten, it was fifty four point five percent at the end of the year. And for twenty twenty, the last school year that we just closed in June, it was fifty four point seven percent overall economically disadvantaged. Of that fifty four point seven percent of our students who are considered or identified as economically disadvantaged. Seventeen, almost eighteen percent were white, fifty six, almost fifty seven percent black. And then on twenty five percent, all that all other category. And so if you look at over time, the way this, the, the pie charts have moved. At any given year, students of color have consistently represented eighty to eighty five percent of our economically disadvantaged students. The bar charts at the bottom of show percent of economically disadvantaged within the ethnicity. So we'll focus on June twenty twenty, the school year that we just closed. What this is telling us is that of our white students, approximately nineteen percent are economically disadvantaged. Of our black students, seventy nine percent, and of the all other, which identify, they can, with all other. They can identify as white as part of the, the mix of race or ethnicities that they report. Some of the elections are up to four, you know, four or more different ethnicities all combined. But it's sixty percent of our, you know, all other students who don't just identify as white or black. Sixty percent of the students were, of those students were economically disadvantaged for last school year. So you can go to the next slide, Leslie. This is a chart that you're accustomed to seeing. It's a snapshot, the end of year snapshot. It's that V that we've been looking at for years now. And as of the end of school year nineteen twenty, you know, we pretty much still have that V pattern continuing. Next slide. But as we go further, the orange bar here represents our current enrollment based on the fall reporting that we do to the state. We're down two hundred and fifty eight students from the end of last school year. That's about a six percent drop. Which is not uncommon across the Commonwealth this year. What we are using for purposes of budget for next year is represented by the gray bar. And this would be us recovering about four percent of that six percent loss. Or roughly sixty, sixty five percent of the students that we lost for this year. And this doesn't mean we actually recover the exact same students. But in, when we talk about recovery of a total enrollment number, one of the things. one of the things that we're hearing consistently is look out for larger kindergartens perhaps next year because some families just chose not to start kindergarten during this school year. So, this would put us, if, if the projections hold true, and this was in line with what we saw coming out from the state for our projections, this gray bar, it would put us back about three years to what our enrollments were at the end of 2018. And that's all I have as far as enrollment and demographic slides, I believe. We can take questions at the end or?
The enrollment is key. The financial impact enrollment will have on our expenditures and stay, we have to monitor. If we use a low enrollment projection number, that means our revenues from the state will be reduced. So, for us to manage this uncertainty in our FY22 budget, we're going to maintain our current state funding levels to help us budget our expenses and revenues this upcoming year. Next slide. So, what we're hearing out of the state right now is that their state revenues are exceeding their projections. And, and that's really good news. And their revenues are coming in from state sales tax, corporate income taxes, and recordation taxes. And, and sales tax comes into the school system. And we are also seeing those sales tax numbers maintain last year's numbers. So, we are, we are also seeing this increase. So, as the General Assembly convenes next month, they're going to have the challenges of allocating spending for K-12, higher ed, public safety, and public health. But another larger policy decision that they're going to have to make is conformity of the federal tax laws that embed the CARES Act. Each year, the General Assembly has to conform the federal tax laws to state law in order for individuals to file their taxes. This year, it will have a bigger impact. If the state fully conforms to the federal tax law, the impact means that the revenues that they have already received will be used up with this conformity law. It's from a seminar that I attended with the CPA. It's, it's not expected that they will probably conform to the federal tax law. They will do pieces of the tax law with the CARES Act. So, that will help us with our funding levels. Next slide. So, key budget factors. The good news is that we are in the second year of our local composite index. So, that will stay the same at .6886. And so, that's really good for us and our revenues. Our expenditures, there is no change with our BRS rates. There was news earlier this week that the governor is proposing paying down 100, 100 million of the debt with BRS. That won't have any impact on our second-year rate. But it could have impacts on future rate years. Our health insurance, we are anticipating our rates to be level. We will have no increases with our health insurance rates. And, and again, as you see the little gears, we're keeping focused on our budget priorities of maintaining instructional programs, recruiting and retaining our staff through the lens of equity. Next slide. So, key dates for budget is that we will come back at our regularly scheduled board meeting on January 7th to present more detailed informations from the governor's budget. We will have our next Saturday work session on January 16th. Where we'll dive deeper into the budget. And then we will conclude January with our joint school board meeting with the city. Any questions?
Let me take the screen off. Thank you. Any questions? Great.
Ms. McKeever?
Ma'am.
Ms. Power talked about we could have a larger-than-normal cohort of kindergarteners coming in next year. We are anticipating that. But we also are anticipating a larger cohort of first graders because many of our families have opted for private settings for kindergarten. And once that is satisfied, they may make the decision next year to transition into first grade in our school system. So, we are expecting that our numbers and our enrollment numbers will rebound and we will get back to numbers that we've seen in the past.
Just want to mention that I've, I've talked to you at length about this, but I, well, maybe not at length, but my big main concern is making sure that whatever backslide we've seen over the past year of virtual learning, that we are able to catch children up as much as possible using what I would call flexible contracts, flexible calendars. I just don't, I really think this is the time to be thinking outside the box. And I would like, that's just going to be my commitment to, I think that's how we get equitable results coming out of this really inequitable situation. And as much as we've tried to, you know, keep kids on track and we're doing the best we can, I think what we need to do next year and in the coming years is go above and beyond what we've been able to offer in the past for our most vulnerable students. And, you know, just really think outside of the box and have some creative thinking around that. So, that's my hope as what I think this is my last full meeting as chair. So, I feel like I can say that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Who's next? Anybody have any comments or questions on this? Okay.
I have one question, comment to agree with what you were saying about in our budget, making room for flexible schedules. So, you know, when we're able to come back after COVID, you know, looking at how we would fund, you know, some type of extended school year and building that into the next budget. And also, just as a new member and going into the budget cycle this go-around, what would be really helpful is to, and I know it's a big ask, but for the budget, we see the changes. And I feel like if we're going through like hard times with our budget and funding and things like that, that we need to take a bigger look at budget items instead of just, these are the increases for this year and looking at the whole picture so that we don't have to cut anymore. So that we don't, I don't want to be in a position of, of cutting people in front of children in classrooms again. So, I want to take a, a big, bigger look at the budget to see where else, you know, where, where money is going. So, just a bigger approach and not just, these are the increases in that tiny part of the budget.
We'd be glad to do that. We have something that we historically call a rainbow section. And, and Ms. Bryson Wolfberger, it, it actually lays out those items that you're talking about now, not just the changes. But we take a very fine-tuned look at each line in our budget. So, we'll be more than happy to provide some additional details about that budget for the entire board.
Any other insights or concerns, questions? Okay, Dr. Atkins, is there anything else on this?
That, that is our entire presentation. Ms. McKeever?
Thank you, Ms. Weaver, for sticking around through that conversation. And we'll go ahead and move into, I think, comments from members of the community is the next item on our agenda. As I said at the beginning, this, we welcome comments from members of the community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record at the start. I will keep time with my handy iPhone here and ask if you would like to make a comment, that you raise your hand in the raise your hand feature in Zoom or put a note in the chat and Mr. Cuomo will tell me who's up. So, Mr. Cuomo, is there anybody interested in speaking? I can't imagine. Anybody has any comment after that?
Had to leave us a little early, so I'll take that role for him. We don't have anyone with their hands raised and I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay, well, we will give you all a couple moments, moments, not minutes, moments, to raise your hand if you would like or make a little note in the chat for us. And should I fill up the airspace with my chatting or? No, just music. Dr. Kraft, would that be good? I can start singing. Nobody wants that. Okay, anybody, Ms. Thacker?
Still no hands raised.
Okay. I assume we will hear from you via email as we have heard from many. Again, our email is schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. And we welcome your emails. And our next meeting, I will tell you later, is January 7th. So, that's the timeline. You have to get your emails in. What's the next item on the agenda is board member comments. So, I will go ahead and invite our board members to speak up at this time. Who would like to go first? Mr. Bryant, you have anything?
You asked who wanted to go first.
I know.
But it seems to be an alphabetical order. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the COVID committee and for their work. Just extremely important work that sort of guided us through this process. The principals, the teachers, the staff members, and all the support folks at central office. This has been really, really tough on all of us. And I'm excited that we are moving forward. And I like the idea of the, of the, of the different models, especially to target those students who are most vulnerable, who need the most assistance. And also with the option of looking at the metrics as we move forward through this process. So, I'm really excited about that. And as I often say, the work continues. So, this is just a starting process. And thank you, Dr. Atkins, for your leadership and leading us and guiding us through this process. It's been a blessing. And we're looking forward to our children returning, some of our children returning to the building and adding support to those students who will continue to work virtually. And I like the fact of the office hours, especially for our seniors who will get used to that idea because when they're off to college, they will contact their professors via office hours. So, I like that idea. And I also want to welcome Ms. Packer, our student representative to the board. Thank you for your valuable input as well. So, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Bryson Wolfberger?
I'll just be quick. I think that this is a great starting point. And I think it really addresses some inequity issues and it, it's a nice middle ground. And I think, I think it's a great starting place. So, I appreciate everyone's work on it. And I think that's it. And I'd just like to add that everyone's going above and beyond. And the teachers with the office hours, my kid participates in office hours. And, you know, she's in elementary school and it's just, it's an amazing catch-all. And so, the office hours are very much appreciated and teachers are juggling lots of students during that time and getting them all on track. So, thank everyone for what they're doing and that's all I have.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes, well, just want to throw out a great big huge bucket of gratitude to our, to Dr. Atkins, to our building leaders, to our teachers, to our COVID committee, everybody who really continues to work so hard and so competently to find the best path forward in this jungle that we find ourselves in, which is so difficult. So, you, you are appreciated. You're seen, you're heard, you're appreciated very much. I, you know, we've, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community. You know, I do want us to get our students back in the buildings as quickly as is safely possible. So, I just want to say that for the record, that that's my goal. And, you know, I, I just hope we can get there, you know, sooner rather than later. And I plan to push for our educators to be seen as essential workers to get the COVID vaccine early, as early as, as possible. In the sequence, I believe that you all are essential workers. And I think this is what should happen. So, I do hope that we can move forward that way and be pleasantly surprised at how quickly everybody can get vaccinated. A couple of other things, I just want to thank the, the PTO reopening fund, the group that's working on that, all the money that you've raised and all the assistance that you've given to our families going through this time. And just the extra support, extra supplies that, that you've been able to provide is a great idea to come up with that. And, and thank you very much. And I want to give a shout out to the family engagement team who held this amazing event of handing out all of this essential stuff last weekend. And I, I was really, really privileged to be able to be there and be a part of that and just see the families as they came through and see all the little kids in the backseat. And I just thought this was just a wonderful, incredible effort that was made for the, for our community. So, thank you for that. And also to the, the day of play, so many things to go above and beyond and to try to see what the needs are out there in our community and where the stresses are and, you know, how we can sort of meet each other in some of these ways that will be helpful to all of us. And just finally, you know, a couple of the most recent committees that I've gone to, the Title I Advisory Group. And I guess the Black Male Alliance Group with Mr. Bryant has started up again. So, anyway, and I wish everybody a peaceful, healthy, safe holiday season. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Ms. Packer, do you have anything to say? Have a comment at all?
Um, just thank you for letting like us student representatives be a part of this. Thank you.
We're so grateful to have you. You just do not understand how important a role the student representative plays on the school board. We're just so grateful to have your input. Ms. Torres?
I think most, everything I was going to say has been said by other board members. But again, Ms. Packer, yes, so happy to have you here and, and your voice and representation. So, thank you for taking the time and sharing this evening with us. I will reiterate what Ms. McKeever said as far as all of us doing our part to keep each other's healthy and safe and, you know, don't give in to that COVID fatigue or whatever you want to label it. It is absolutely crucial that, that, you know, we do our part. And thank you, Dr. Atkins, and all of the team and everybody who played a part in, in, you know, getting these plans together tonight. So, thank you. And Ms. McKeever, thank you for your leadership and all of the other board members as well. So, thank you. And Ms. McKeever, thank you for your leadership and all of the other board members as well. So thank you.
Okay, um, so I just want to say thank you to everybody and happy holidays, happy new year, merry Christmas, and happy Hanukkah. We are just, there's a lot of holidays, I'm sorry, happy Kwanzaa. I mean, there's like, so I'm going to fail as usual, but I want to say thank you to everybody and happy holidays and onward to next year. And hopefully, we can move forward from this year. So, Dr. Atkins, your comments?
Ms. McKeever, thank you. Just want to say again, echo those thank yous to everyone. Our teachers, they are constantly adjusting to deliver the best instruction possible. This plan actually reflects their voices, their desires, the desires of our community. It's not a perfect plan. It's not one that everyone will embrace or will fit everyone's schedule. However, it is one that has sought and received a great deal of input from our stakeholders, from our teachers, internal and external stakeholders, and it represents collective thought. So thank you to everyone for your input. Also want to say to our board, we could not have developed the plan that we have developed without your input. Asking tough questions, pushing in a loving way, but pushing and making sure that you don't hold back on asking those tough questions. That, that is what gets us to where we are now. So thank you. Happy holidays to everyone, to our staff. I know you need the break. And the rest to our teachers. I hope each one of you enjoy some time with your family and the break that's coming up. Thank you.
And please take a break. So yeah, and the next item is the work session wrap-up. Dr. King?
Yes, Madam McKeever. First, to share the COVID-19 testing schedule on our division website, provide an update on the status of the HVAC systems, and to discuss the return to learn plan for grades three, four, five, and six.
Great. Thank you, Dr. King. Note to all our next upcoming meetings, January 7 at 5 via Zoom. We're doing the school board meeting on January 7. And then we're doing a budget work session on Saturday, January 16. That's probably going to be early. There's no time here, but we'll see, usually around 8:30. And then we're going to have a joint budget work session with city council on January 28. No time yet there either. So yeah, that's all I have for our upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to add at this point? Okay.
I was just, oh, sorry, I was just on our website. I'm sure it's listed, the PTO budget sessions too. So for people to, to look at our site and calendar for those.
Yeah, so there are a few budget work sessions that are at PTO meetings and that. So if you are interested in the budget, that's where you can have some great input besides via email or at our, at our meetings. Okay, so hearing no objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye. Happy holidays.